Seven, nine. Um, we'll begin with calling a roll and then we'll say the pledge of allegiance and then we'll launch right into the committee's presentation.
Athlete?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flinthoff?
Present.
Noel?
Present.
Riser?
Present.
Brzezo?
Present.
Carrie? Absent. We have four.
All right, let's join in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bring this to the platter, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We're here today to, uh, learn about the work of the fire guidance committee and then I will turn it over to the committee. Uh, if you would, um, chief introduce, I got, I don't know if you're going to be the spokesperson or, um, if anyone else is coming up who's going to participate, please introduce yourself, um, at that time. Oh wait, do we need to have public comment?
Well, I was just gonna ask about that. I was gonna ask a point of order. Are we gonna do the, uh, public comment at the outset or are we gonna wait until the end until after they've presented?
What would people prefer? It's, we have one public comment during special meetings.
I think afterwards, good, we could hear what he has to say in the comment on.
Yeah, I don't care what it is, but I, we're just gonna move that there be one and.
Well, yes, I thank you for the reminder. I was just remembering that myself. So, um, unless there's a.
One, one member of the public would like to come now?
I have to go and be with my mother-in-law, so I.
Please, please come up and, please come up and, um, we'll, unless there's objection or someone else, we'll delay the other public comment until the end of.
And I don't know who's doing timing, but I'll stay about right at three minutes. Um, thank you. Uh, Pam Boyd, Syo resident. I have briefly stepped away from my current elder caregiving duties to talk about something that's hugely important to me. Our township fire department. After having been to township meetings for the last three years, in particular, planning commission and board of trustees meetings, one issue is really clear. Our fire department has been ill-prepared to go into the future to protect its residents. I would argue that chiefhood's hands have been tied by the behavior of previous boards that have left our fire department to be run out of an unhealthy building, under-equipped and understaffed. Syo Township is well behind where it should be, um, as far as fire stations, number of firefighters, equipment, salaries, and even EMS training. I've spoken to a firefighter who's a family friend who could not afford to take a pay cut to work for our fire department, even though he lives closer to our fire department than the one he's employed at. It is up to this board to protect its residents. It's on your shoulders how we go forward with our fire department needs with the new developments coming to Syo Township, targeting the 55 and older demographics over the next couple of years. We are underprepared and a giant step needs to be taken to catch up to where our fire department needs to be. It's going to be a shock to my tax bill. And I blame Syo Township for not doing a better job keeping stride with the fire department needs in the past. Previous boards, as much as said, you have a fire station and trucks, don't ask us for more money. Prior to forming the Fire Services Guidance Committee, uh, where, uh, where were the yearly priorities to make sure that residents had a robust fire department matching the ever-changing needs of Syo Township? You have one page, page ninety-two, um, of the, um, of the Syo Township master plan that talks about our fire department. You even have a mistake on that page, by the way. Um, it's fancy words, but no goals. The document, Fire Department Staffing Needs and Deployment Assessment, was written over two years ago. Syo should have used that document immediately to create a five-year plan. Thankfully, we were blessed with the hiring of chiefhood who knew the definition of a healthy fire department. This board is going to need to sell residents of, uh, of, um, sell residents. Syo Township has been underfunding the fire department needs and unfortunately, in order to catch up, it's gonna require a significant, um, investment in our tax dollars. I want to thank the Fire Services Guidance Committee members. I think this turned out to be a bigger task than originally planned. I also want to thank those residents who listened in on those meetings and voiced their opinions. I want to thank chiefhood and Lance and other firefighters who gave us their time to talk to us. Thank you, and unfortunately, I can't stay for the rest of the meeting. And I will give you this page, Jessica.
Sure. That's a pretty silly mistake.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Someone else who would like to have their turn at public comment? Um, at this point, we'll plunge ahead with the presentation.
And, and just a housekeeping note, I don't, is, is, there may be an intentional reason why it's dark back there. But if not, turn on the lights. Okay, that's all.
Thank you, board of trustees. Um, I didn't, I was asked by a resident. Uh, they don't know our firefighters very well, but we do happen to have quite a few in the audience here. So in the back, Captain Dan Burke, Lieutenant Brett Warren, Sergeant Chris Callier, Sergeant Drew Sickel. And most of you probably already know Lance Baird as well, Lieutenant, and he's been a member of the committee. Uh, as we get started, I want to make sure I thank the members of the committee. Uh, we had eight members who spent most Wednesday mornings for months, uh, in this very room, discussing the issues and they put a lot of work into this project. Chair of the committee, David Reed, who could not beat her. Vice Chair Bob Roden, Secretary Ryan Yeaple, Lance Baird, Jessica Flinthoff, Mitch Goodsett, Bob Hyde, and Mark Perry. Thank you all for your hard work. So what we have here is a PowerPoint presentation, uh, that discusses some of the issues, uh, and makes, and goes through the recommendations of the Fire Services Guidance Committee. Uh, some of these slides I've used before, so a few of them look familiar. Uh, that's why. A number of slides, uh, we moved to the end in appendix material, we're not gonna go over those tonight. Uh, and I'm welcome, uh, welcome questions whenever you might have them.
And the report contains everything that's rolled up here?
Correct. This is, uh, this, this, uh, presentation we get tonight is an abbreviated version, but, uh, we've got a nine-page document on the, on the website with, uh, full written recommendation. So Washington County Emergency Services, there's much more than just your fire department in Washington County. There's, uh, dispatchers, there's a police function, fire EMS, road commission, special operation, emergency operations center, and all these, all kind of function together, uh, to provide emergency services within the county. Uh, but, you know, our goal here is to talk about, uh, the fire department only. I need to get myself to. So fire departments, um, where does a fire department come from? Most fire departments are municipal organizations run by a local governing body. Uh, Syo Township, at a point, and it's passed, uh, used a different form. Uh, they use, they, they were contract services through Dexter Fire Authority. Uh, but as Syo grew, they recognized the need to form their own municipal fire department and did so in the mid-eighties. Uh, most larger fire departments are, uh, run by an individual municipality. And out here in, in Washington County, we've got a number of smaller, uh, communities that band together to form fire protection. Dexter Area Fire covers Dexter and a couple of townships. Chelsea covers a number of townships, uh, and that's how they provide service. Syo Township provides service in Syo Township. And I'll talk a little bit about the services your fire department provides. Um, first and foremost, fire suppression, I think anyone would have guessed that. It's a primary function of a fire department. We respond to building fires, vehicle fires, crash, brush fires. Uh, anything that's, uh, on fire or smoking, we had to call for it. Um, total sixty-four fires in twenty-twenty-one, I'm just compiling our twenty-twenty-two data. About five percent of our total calls and thirty-three of those being building fires, both within the community and outside. And when we get called to a fire, there's a number of different ways we can address it. And, and this is kind of important just to see how many people it actually takes to, to manage a hand line. Uh, our, our normal, uh, hand line that we would use on, say, a car fire, a, a building fire, where we're gonna go inside and fight the fire from the inside, is an inch and three-quarter hand line. We apply water at about a hundred gallons a minute on a, what we call a trash fire. That would be dumpster or vehicle or something, uh, you know, not, not, not a building. Uh, when we use, uh, this inch and three-quarter hand line for structural use for a building fire, we, we flow it at a hundred and sixty gallons a minute. And it's generally two people to manage that hand line. There's quite a bit of force behind it. Uh, two people to manage it and hold around as they move throughout a building. Uh, we have a larger line, two-and-a-half inch hand line. Uh, it's a three-hundred gallon a minute line. Um, it's much heavier, much harder to maneuver, but it throws about twice the water, so you can, uh, apply a lot more water. And to manage it, uh, two to four people. If we're gonna be outside a house and apply water from the outside, we can have two people put it in place and it generally doesn't move much. Or if we're gonna move it inside a building, it's three to four people to maneuver. Then we also have some other devices which are generally defensive, which is not going inside a home, a master street device, generally from a fixed position, um, and they flow five-hundred-plus gallons per minute. We'll talk a little bit about how many firefighters it takes to fight a car fire. Today, we happen to have four folks on duty, so, uh, firefighter Callier is our pump operator. He's gonna drive the vehicle to the scene. He's gonna get the pump working and, and put water at the right pressure into the right line for the guys. We need two firefighters to manage the hose line. Um, it's gonna be Lieutenant Warren and firefighter Sickel. The two of them are gonna control the hand line, they're gonna put water where the, where the fire is on, on the vehicle, whatever it might be. And we've got one incident commander, that's Captain Burke. He's gonna stand back, watch the overall scene, make sure, uh, uh, the, the, the guys that are working in the smoke are, are missing something and, and he's gonna be in charge, call for extra resources if we need it. Uh, ideally, we'd have two or three more people on scene. We'd have another crew come up, they'd, uh, use some hand tools, they'd open trunks, open up the hood so that the guys with the hose line can apply the water. Unfortunately, we don't have that. Uh, we've only got four guys on duty today. Um, and generally, our engine has enough water to fight a car fire. So generally, four to seven people is adequate, uh, to fight a car fire. Tractor trailer fire is a little bit different. Uh, as you can see, we go up in scope. Again, we still need a pump operator, we still need an incident commander. Uh, oftentimes, we'll need to put two hand lines in service on a tractor-trailer fire. Um, and we're gonna need two to four people using tools to, say, open up the back of the tractor-trailer, move debris about so we can get water on and where everything that's burning. And if it's not within nine-hundred feet of municipal water, we're gonna need one or two water tankers to bring water out to us. Um, and that's just for ordinary combustibles on a tractor-trailer, not, uh, hazardous materials.
Is that because you have nine-hundred feet of hose on the truck? And by municipal water, do you mean hydrant?
Correct. Yep. We, we carry a thousand feet, but, you know, I don't want to be ten feet short on, on a fire, so we try to be a little conservative. But bottom line, a tractor-trailer, uh, eight to fourteen people to, to fight that fire. And we'll talk about a, a building. Um, again, one pump operator, we've got an incident commander. Uh, we're gonna, here, we're gonna add an incident command aide, an accountability officer. An incident commander's managing where he's gonna put people. And the aide is gonna keep track of all those people where they are and how many people we have in reserve and let him know if, uh, we have other people to do the next thing he needs done. Uh, we're gonna need probably two, uh, two to four people are gonna be managing one or two hand lines, which will be a couple of people on a backup line. Two or three people are gonna need to go inside and search the building for occupants inside the home. Uh, two to four people for a rapid intervention team. There's, uh, a crew that's ready to take action if something catastrophic were to happen. And two to three to ventilate the building. And if, again, if we're in an area without municipal water, uh, probably two or three water tankers. Uh, and another six to eight people. So, bottom line, a routine, um, significant fire in a building is gonna take us somewhere between fifteen and twenty people to address. And as we talked earlier, we've got four folks on duty today, so really, where do we get the rest of those people? We rely on our neighbors, just as they rely on us. We've got a pretty strong mutual aid system. Uh, we use local mutual aid for routine incidents such as a building fire or an extrication. We'll call one to four of our neighbors to come out and help us. They come out, help us, we go, we all go back to our stations and if they need help, we, we return the favor. Larger incidents, uh, we, we can call, uh, what's called a MABUS activation. It stands for Mutual Aid Box Alarm System. This is basically a county-level mutual aid system. Uh, and two, two incidents I can only think of where, uh, MABUS divisions have been called out of county recently. There was a fire in the Upper Peninsula and a, what I believe is either a paper factory or a sawmill that burned for about a month. Uh, so clearly that exhausted the local resources. Uh, but crews from, uh, Wayne County were up in the Upper Peninsula fighting fire. Uh, and more recently in Saginaw, there was an elevator, grain elevator that, uh, recently caught fire. We actually sent two water tankers from Washington County up, up there to assist, uh, shuttling water out for that operation. Um, so we have the ability to get local resources and resources from out, throughout the state. We can even get, uh, out-of-state resources at the state through this, uh, MABUS system. Uh, local mutual aid is just reciprocal agreement, which allows sharing of resources. We've, uh, get everything from a single resource request. If we need a water tanker for a vehicle fire or, uh, we have pre-arranged alarm cards for, for, uh, incidents such as structure fires. Uh, on the right-hand side of your screen there, you can see the, the first blue box all the way across and receive report of a building fire. It's, uh, sent as what we call a still alarm, which means all the Syo Township resources respond. And if we get there, determine it's a major incidence, we, um, upgrade to a full first alarm, which brings us resources from Ann Arbor City, Dexter, Ann Arbor Township, and Chelsea potentially. And that, uh, that cascade's up from there, so we, we have the ability to get resources from throughout the county to our incident scenes, uh, pretty rapidly. Uh, we also have specialty teams, which we have members on all of these teams from our department, the technical rescue team, uh, which, uh, has been used in the, this township before. We had a tractor-trailer accident a number of years back. Took them probably twelve hours to get the driver freed. Uh, swift water rescue team and hazardous materials teams. Another thing we do here is, uh, emergency medical services. Uh, first responders to medical emergencies. Often arrive first, we can provide basic life support. That includes, uh, CPR, uh, defibrillation with an AED. We have some medications we can give. We've got aspirin for someone who may be having a heart attack. Uh, we have, uh, breathing treatments we can give and, and everybody's probably familiar with the opioid crisis. Uh, we can administer Narben to counteract an opioid overdose as well. In twenty-twenty-one, about fifty-five percent of our calls, uh, were medically related. That includes car accidents as well.
So chief, on the basic life support, that, there, there's also advanced life support?
That's correct. And, uh, so, uh, basic life support is an EMT level.
Okay.
And advanced life support's paramedic level. Uh, paramedics, uh, can read, uh, apply and interpret a twelve-lead KG. They have a much larger drug box, uh, for.
So do some fire departments have basic and advanced?
Yes.
How about, how about a Washington County?
No. Uh, everyone in Washington County is either medical first responder or basic.
Okay.
Where I came from, in Macomb County, uh, the majority of departments are paramedic, uh, advanced life support. And how many, how many firefighters take to handle a medical emergency? So, uh, we, we, depending on staffing, it's on two or three. Um, two firefighters to start patient care, that's, you know, take vital signs, administer oxygen, take a patient's history, start writing a report. Uh, maybe another person would help when HV arrives, bring some of their equipment in, help care their drug box, their monitor, you know, whatever equipment they need. And then there's two or three ambulance personnel who show up. Uh, two on a minor, uh, routine medical emergency, but oftentimes, we'll get three if it's a serious emergency. So we could have, you know, seven people there. You know, for a cardiac arrest, it's not uncommon for us to have probably seven, eight people there, all of different roles.
Can I ask a question? So if somebody has a heart attack, I'm really just curious about this, is you can't answer why? Wonder why? Um, so you guys show up and then who carts you? Do some, the separate ambulance would cart you to the, to the hospital, you're kind of there to stabilize till the ambulance shows up? And there, the more advanced, as John articulated, the more advanced group that can.
Yep, you hit the nail on the head. You know, we, we'll, uh, heart attack example, we'll show up, we'll take vital signs, we'll get a patient history, we'll administer oxygen, uh, administer aspirin and tell the ambulance hurry up if, uh, if it's a, you know, if we think this is really life-threatening. Everything we can to get them prepped and we'll even help drive them to the hospital if it's that critical.
And you have one unit to do that. So if two people are having that same paradigm at the same time, that's a problem.
Based on staffing, yes. Uh, today with four folks on duty, we, we put two on a rescue and two on the engine, so we can handle two medical calls. Uh, tomorrow, we might only have three folks on, so we're only gonna send the, the engine out and handle, be able to handle one medical call.
But if you had four people on the engine and you had a medical emergency, what would happen if that jumps in?
So I'd, I'd split them up, two and two on the, there'd be two on a rescue and two on the engine. The rescue would go first, take the first medical call. And if it was a serious, it was like a cardiac arrest, everybody would go, including, you know, Assistant Chief, it's, you know, he's available himself on the call.
All right, last question. So you get a call for, uh, four people to go to a burn home and then ten minutes later, you have the medical emergency, that one happens. Cause those people already, now got dedicated.
We're, we're committed to that incident. Um, we're relying on HV to handle the bomb.
Got it, okay.
By rescue vehicle, I would look at that and might think it's an act of.
It is. We call it a rescue. But it is, yes.
Is it also fair time to say that there's gotta be a formula for X amount of residents, for X amount of distance, for population density? You have a fire department per, you know, the recommended safety level is X, is that a fair statement?
Probably a little more complicated than that, but yeah. You know, we, and I'll, I'll get to some of those points a little further on.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to be jumping the gun, sorry.
Rescue calls, we, you know, extricate victims from car crashes, we do some low-angle rescue stuff along the river. Um, help people off roofs if they're, you know, get injured up there. Uh, ice and water rescue, um, not so much ice this year, but more water. Uh, machinery rescue, you know, any type of incident, uh, uh, that can be considered a rescue will do. Um, uh, talking about car accidents, it takes us, uh, seven to nine people to manage a car accident generally. Uh, driver and a pump operator, he or she is gonna position the, the first driving unit to, to provide protection for the scene, an incident commander. Couple of people to provide patient care, one or two people to control hazards and fluids, you know, stop the oil from leaking into the floor, uh, into the, uh, ditches or wherever. Uh, if there's, uh, if there's fuel spilled, get some sort of extinguisher out and available. And then two or three people on the ambulance, uh, to help per, per person injured. Um, a little short on a car accident, you know, we, we don't quite have enough people to meet all these goals right away. Um, but, you know, our four guys are gonna show up and, uh, that'll take a little longer, but we'll get all the jobs done we need to get done, we'll see.
So as ninety-four goes from Maple Road to Parker Road to Syo Township, is that your responsibility? Do you shade those calls?
Most of them. Um, currently, from Wagner to Maple, it's covered by Ann Arbor City.
Okay.
But, uh, the, the remainder of ninety-four is ours, as is, uh, M fourteen, uh, all the way to Maple.
Okay.
Uh, so that was a routine car accident, a more serious car accident, vehicle extrication. Um, so we have, add a couple more complications here. Still need our driver, pump operator, we still need our incident commander. Now, we've got to stabilize the vehicle so that we can start using power tools on it. Uh, one to three people to operate tools. Uh, we've got three tools that, uh, we keep on our engine. All can be operated simultaneously. Uh, we still need people to control fluids, control hazards, uh, and a couple to provide patient care. I need ambulance people, uh, to actually take the people, uh, to the hospital. So, an extrication's typically nine to fourteen people for a significant extrication. If it's something pretty minor, we just have to pop a door open, um, you know, our, our on-duty crews can generally handle that. Uh, we also respond to hazardous conditions, carbon monoxide incidents, odor investigations, gas leaks, wires down, hazmat incidents. Um, all sorts of just general hazardous conditions called or respond to. We also do fire inspection and investigation. Um, our fire marshal, Assistant Chief Doug Armstrong, does site plan reviews, he inspects businesses for fire code, uh, compliance. And the whole goal of this is to reduce fire risk within the community. Um, keeps our businesses open and, uh, you know, keeps our tax base strong. Uh, we also determine origin and cause of fires and do some public education work. And talk a little bit about our assets right now. Um, facilities, we've got one centrally located fire station on Zebra. This is the original building that Township constructed. Uh, it was constructed in eighty-seven, eighty-eight and we renovated it in twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two. Uh, I figure ballpark fifty-year life expectancy for a building like this, so that renovation got us another fifteen to twenty years of life out of the building. Primary fire engines, two thousand seventeen model year. This is our first responder, uh, for vehicle fires, car fires, house fires, accidents, medical calls, and we have only three people on duty. Uh, it's in good mechanical condition. Um, all of our vehicles always require some work, very complicated and odds and ends go wrong, uh, but it's in good mechanical shape. And it's got a fifteen-year frontline life expectancy and another ten years in reserve. So it should, uh, twenty-thirty-two be placed in reserve status and then retired in twenty-four. Backup engine's a two thousand ten model year. Uh, it's used primarily when our, uh, primary engine is out of service. Uh, it's in, it's in good mechanical shape, it doesn't really meet our needs, it only seats two people. Uh, it was purchased at a different time in the department and it should be retired in twenty-thirty-five. Uh, talk a little bit about what an engine's good for. It's actually the workforce of the fleet. It's, uh, they're designed very well with pump and hose configuration, uh, both hose to get to a hydrant and hose to, uh, used to extinguish fires. Uh, we've got large compartments and room for tools. Uh, they've got adequate, uh, water for areas with municipal water. Our primary engine's got a thousand gallon tank. We get probably five or six minutes worth of, uh, water out of that tank and by that time, we should have a water supply hooked up with a, to a hydrant and we should be good to go for a while. And they're the cheapest, which is always good. Um, although they're, everything's going, uh, getting much pricier, there, there's around seven-hundred thousand today to replace. Negatives of an engine, uh, it's got less water than it needs for rural operations. Uh, ours only carries a thousand gallons and many only carry seven-fifty or, or less. And it's got less capacity for ladders, our, our largest, longest ladder is a twenty-four-foot ladder, which, uh, will struggle to reach the top of this building adequately. Uh, our water tanker's a two thousand two model year. Uh, this is used to bring water to areas with no municipal water. We carry twenty-five-hundred gallons of water on it. It's in decent mechanical condition, should have been placed in reserve twenty-seventeen and it should be retired in twenty-twenty-seven. And we do not have a reserved tanker. Uh, this twenty-five-hundred gallons of water gets us another fifteen or minute, fifteen minutes or so of, uh, water flowing on a fire scene. Tanker has some pretty significant positives, it carries a large amount of water, which is what we need rurally. And it can be designed to pump water as well. Um, negatives, less compartment space for tools and equipment, less space for hose. More expensive than an engine, they're nine-hundred thousand plus. Um, higher maintenance and operating costs and they're bigger, heavier and less maneuverable. So while it can, uh, it's really, they excel at doing their job, moving water around. They can serve as a backup engine, but they're less than ideal. It's for a short period of time, we can deal with that, it's probably not what we want serving as an engine. And once again, here's our rescue, uh, twenty-twenty-two Ford Lifeline ambulance, uh, responds primarily to medical calls when we have four people on duty, which is less than half the time right now. Uh, it's in excellent mechanical condition and probably ten-year primary service life expectancy. Last piece of our fleet here is our brush truck. It's a, uh, two thousand seven Ford F-four-fifty, uh, responds to grass and brush fires. Typically, we replace it after fifteen years, but, uh, this thing, uh, it's in such good shape that I don't see the need right now. I think we can probably get another three to five years out of it before we need to replace it. And really, we really don't need a reserve for this vehicle. We have to have it with the open space we have, um, but it doesn't see a whole lot of, uh, you know, frontline work. And, uh, we'll notice here, we've got a ladder truck, but I don't picture, we don't have one. Um, it's got some spectacular positives, it can reach most any buildings roof in this township. Uh, they, they have up to a hundred and ten-foot, uh, hydraulically controlled ladders on the top of them, plus, uh, a much larger complement of ground ladders. And they can have, uh, pump, pump water and, and have water tanks, so they can be used as a, as a reserve engine as well. Water tanks are generally smaller and they generally carry a little less hose. Negatives, less compartment space, less hose, less water, and they're expensive. Uh, and also like the water tanker, less maneuverability, more expensive to build, uh, and operate. I'd actually just spoken with one of our vendors today, he gave me a call. We'd, uh, we talked to him a little bit and he kinda wanted to design a ladder truck for us. So we put something together and it's ballpark one-point-five million. Um, he said they've got a, uh, five percent increase coming the end of February. So we just, uh, we're pushing one-point-six million dollars now. And this is, it probably had two increases last year, so, uh, prices are going up quickly on this. Uh, and our most important asset is our staffing. Um, we have, uh, shifts that work twenty-four hours a day, so, uh, and I, I don't know which number shift is on today, but if we'd say shift one started today at seven AM, uh, they work till seven AM tomorrow. Shift two would then come in at seven AM, replace them and work till seven AM the next morning. Was then replaced by shift three and then shift one comes back on. Uh, so three personnel per shift and they work twenty-four hours. Additionally, we have one paid-on call firefighter slot, uh, so we can staff up to four people. And we are able to staff probably about a third of the time with that fourth person. Our goal is to have four people staffed on a twenty-four-hour basis. Our goal is to have four people staffed on a 24 hour basis. Um, I'll talk a little bit about my OSHA and OSHA's two in, two out requirements a little later, but, uh, that's, that's our most important driver when we're talking about staffing on duty, is meeting that two in, two out requirement. Current administrative staffing, uh, myself, fire chief. I work a 40 hour week, Monday through Friday. Assistant chief fire marshal, 40 hour week, Monday through Friday. And we have our administrative assistant, uh, Terry, uh, who works 20 hours, uh, Monday through Thursday, night to. Current village funding, uh, 1.35 mil Act 33, ballpark 1.9 million revenue, about 80% personnel, 20% building maintenance, cost allocation, I'm sorry, 10%, about 10% tools, equipment supplies. Year over year, uh, went up a little bit. We, our tax and value went up a little bit. We're bringing in some inspection fees, but costs go up a little bit with those too. Couple of things we don't fund for, um, our current, uh, village does not provide adequate staffing for us to meet two in, two out on a 24/7 basis. Uh, we're not dedicating any money to replacement of equipment. Uh, we've got some pretty pricey equipment that we have definitive, uh, lifespans for. We're not, uh, funding that replacement. We're not funding vehicle replacement costs either. Uh, those are very expensive pieces of equipment and we're not setting aside money at all to replace those when they're, uh, when their life expectancy is reached.
For everybody's benefit, tell everybody what my OSHA is and what the importance of that regulation is.
We got it a little later down.
Thank you.
Yep. And we have no money. Um, we're not provided any money for department expansion, for purchasing property, construction of a building or equipment. Just, uh, just for Zebra, we'll talk about this a little bit later. Uh, a fourth person. Need to replace our tank with a combo pumper tanker. It's a 900,000 dollar car there. Uh, we have a ladder truck, uh, brush truck, three to four years. Uh, the township's been, uh, investing a lot of money in open space. Uh, we need an ATV style vehicle to be able to get back there and fight fires as well as rescue people. And we need, do need to start saving some money for vehicle equipment replacement. This is really where the work of the Fire Services Guidance Committee starts on this title, need for expansion here. Um, I, I, I love this slide. Um, and we talked a little bit about this with trustee Brazil earlier. We get what we pay for. We can have fewer stations, but that leads to longer response times because we've got more distance to cover before we get to a call. A lower level of service because we've only got a certain amount of people we can put in that building and a certain amount of people we can send out on calls. Uh, oftentimes it'll be higher fire loss. Uh, if we gotta travel 10 minutes to get to a fire, there's probably more loss than if we gotta travel two. Uh, like more life safety, same thing. If someone's having a heart attack or anaphylactic reaction or something like that, uh, 10 minute response time is gonna lead to a worse outcome than a two minute response time. But there are positives too, uh, less personnel and more cost. On the other side of the, on the coin here, we could build six fire stations in Syo Township. We'd have super short response times. We'd, we'd be stacking people in on your emergency. Fire loss would go down, life safety'd go up, but it's gonna cost a lot more and there's gonna be a lot more people. So bottom line is we've gotta figure out what the right balance is. And what did the Fire Services Guidance Committee use to determine what, what our needs are for the township? So they looked at strategic plans. There's a plan from 96 from, uh, our first fire chief, Chief Dane, uh, 2015 strategic plan from Chief Furch, uh, 2018 Emergency Services Consulting International came in and did a study of a needs assessment for the township. Uh, so they looked at those. Uh, they looked at the ISO rating. Uh, ISO is Insurance Services Office. Uh, ISO rates your fire department based on set criteria and some insurance companies use that to help set the rates. Oftentimes others don't. Uh, sometimes they just look at road miles, but, uh, ISO rating is a, is a fairly reasonable measure of risk. Uh, they'll get response times, how long does it take us to get where we're going. Number of calls in an area. If we have an area that's got a third of our calls within three square miles, uh, that, that might be consideration for building and also incident heat mapping. Throughout the process, the Fire Services Guidance Committee, uh, identified a number of, uh, a number of, of, of issues that, that they hope to address, first being OSHA and my OSHA's two in, two out requirement. And that one's pretty important and that's a general industry standard that also applies to fire service. Before we can, as firefighters, enter a, an immediately dangerous to life and health area, which would be, say, a building on fire, we have to have two people working together at going in and we have to have two people outside ready to rescue them in case they get hurt. So the key there is before we can enter a burning building, we have to have four people on scene. Two to go in, to work as a team, and two to be outside ready to rescue. Uh, we, the committee identified achieving a six minute response time 90% of the time. Uh, that comes out of NFPA documents and we, we did a little averaging of their, their times in there. NFPA specifically states we should have a four minute response time and a turnout time of 60 seconds for a medical call and 90 seconds for a fire call. Rather than make a five and a half minute response time or something, we just said, look, let's just make it six minutes for ease of understanding and consistency. And we wanna meet that goal 90% of the time. Uh, one issue that I identified and the committee agreed with was improvement of our department training. So right now we, we have a number of skill sheets. However, we have different, uh, firefighters on shift, uh, working on the instruction. So the, uh, the instruction on this shift is gonna be different than that shift. So, uh, that leads to some inconsistencies. And also our tracking of that and, uh, is getting better, but it continues some improvement. And lastly, we're not, we don't have someone dedicated to go out, um, go to different training academies and bring the training back, which consistently provided. So they felt that that was important, uh, to, to improve the department. Uh, improvement of our ISO score. Again, that's a measure of risk. Uh, it's, uh, measured, uh, on a one to 10 scale. We currently are a class six fire department. And then ability to achieve BLS transport and ALS transport. Um, and not just as an issue here in Washtenaw County or Michigan, but nationwide, there's a shortage of paramedics. Um, people are leaving private EMS for nursing and for other fields. And, uh, and a number of various fire departments are being forced to, uh, start some transport services to, to benefit their citizens and help offset those losses. We have an, an ambulance. We call it a rescue. It's licensed as a non-transport unit, but an emergency. We can and have transported people. Uh, our neighbors on either side, uh, Chelsea and Ann Arbor, both are, have either purchased and licensed vehicles for transport or in the process of doing so.
So why isn't it transport?
Uh, I really need four people on duty to do that. I need to have consistent four people on duty every day so we can, uh, reliably staff.
So you have four people you can transport? Like one in the front, one in the back, and then two at the station in case something comes up?
Yep. Be able to handle a second call. Yep. It does leave us a little bit open when a second call comes in and it's a fire. Um, but yeah, that, you know, that, that is one of the goals to be able to, uh, staff so that we can transport and still not affect our fire service.
And is there not having four people generally due to, we don't have enough firefighters or we just haven't budgeted for it or it's?
Well, we have a budgeted for and nor do we have enough firefighters. So here's what the, after working through all these, uh, issues, the Fire Service Guidance Committee came up with a number of recommendations. Uh, first and foremost was to extinguish the 1.5 million dollar loan from the general fund to the fire fund. This is, um, one of the members explained it, um, from his perspective as a taxpayer, and that's really when it sank home to me as well. Uh, and, and I'm gonna paraphrase and I will not be able to speak as eloquently as he did about this, but he basically said, um, the township has been collecting tax from him and the other residents and putting it in the general fund and building it up. General fund can be used to fund anything within Syo Township. We chose to renovate the fire station, use some of that money to pay back or to, to, for that building. And then we need to tax the residents again so that the fire fund can pay the general fund back. And he felt that we were essentially taxing the residents twice for, for that Uh, recommendation two, pursue a millage rate that will allow us to reach step three and all the steps are following, including a throttle governor mechanism. And that throttle governor mechanism is important, uh, to make sure that we maintain public trust. Um, they expect, uh, that I'll come before you every year with exactly where we're gonna need to be this year and look very closely at our budget and see exactly how many tax dollars we need and only assess what we need. Um, build up to what our reserve is and then only go for operating from there. Uh, fund capital improvements through a millage separate from the operating funds. Uh, the committee felt that if we're gonna make a, a longer term investment in a building and some equipment for it, uh, that it would probably be more palatable if we paid for it over, say, 10 or 12 years at a much lower tax rate and then just fund operations, uh, on a day to day basis. Uh, they recommend revise the existing fund balance policy to allow for nine to 12 months of reserve in the fire fund. I think currently it says nine months. And, uh, have that nine to 12 months be exclusive of any equipment and vehicle replacement funds. So we'd be able to save money for, to replace our vehicles, but still have a nine to 12 month emergency They recommended we purchase properties on the west side of the township and the northeast side of the township for further improvements as they become necessary. Uh, one of the members that was on this committee was a planning commissioner member. And, uh, and I think this board has seen a lot of stuff happening on the west side of the township. Uh, the committee looked at the data and right now we're meeting our response time goals to the west side of the township. Uh, and we don't have a, you know, we're, we're doing maybe 40% of our calls with the west side of the township. With some additional development, that may change and in the future may warrant a station, but land is rapidly, uh, being bought up and used over on the west side of the township. They thought it'd be prudent to purchase some property so that we're prepared for the time when we do need a, an additional fire station on the west side. And additionally, on the northeast side of the township, um, that's a little later on, uh, but there's gonna become a point in time where we need to replace the, uh, Zebra and fire station and it's anticipated now 15, 20 years from now, uh, we replace it with a third fire station, uh, to, to serve the area. So steps for improvement. Here's just a broad overview of the steps and we'll dig into them a little bit. Step one, fully stab Zebra road station. Uh, step 1.5, consider a temporary EMS station in the southeast area of the township. Step two, construct and staff a station at Liberty and Wagner, uh, with fire apparatus. Step three, add a rescue, uh, to the Wagner station. And then step four, which they did not recommend, was add additional fire apparatus to the Wagner station.
So where does an EMS station?
So one of the members of the committee, um, when he was looking at the data, about half our calls are medically related. And, uh, the area of the highest concentration of population where we're not meeting our response time goals are in the southeast section of the township. Uh, he had, he had the idea that we could find a building that we'd be able to house a couple of people in, in the garage for a rescue and meet at least half those calls while we're in the process of working through a second station. Improve our medical response down there, uh, in, in that area of the township until we get a second station.
Like kinda close to Brad's zone, just in case.
I'll probably use it unfortunately. Keep the her text up anyway.
Um, Andy?
Yes.
So I, I, is that feasible? I mean, is property readily available in that area?
There's some, there's some complicating factors, property availability being the biggest one. Um, yeah.
There is that.
Yeah, there is that. Um, and there would be some renovations. We're gonna staff firefighters in there. It's gotta meet certain my OSHA requirements. Uh, so there'd be some renovation costs as well. But yeah, it's, uh, it's possible. It'd probably be difficult, but you know, I, I think it's worth, uh, considering if, if we can.
And if I could, chief, the other kinda main part of the conversation, looking at that option, wasn't just feasibility, but it was kinda like, what is the end game? Like, we want the fire department to be 90% of your call, right? 90% of your calls within six minutes.
Sure.
Not just 90% of the medical calls. And when we did look at that mess of data, um, that the fire department has, you know, it's not like people in the southeast have more medical calls than stuff, another area of the township. It's pretty evenly distributed. So I think that there is also, uh, that the committee talked a lot about kinda what the policy goal of it was too. And even if it were feasible, recognize that it wouldn't meet as many of the policy goals as some of the other options.
Yeah. Isn't there property that I know we bought the property for Vestigard Farm over there. Is there any of that, wasn't there a piece already carved out, maybe four?
Yes.
Yeah, we purchased it.
That's what I thought. Okay. So there's.
It's real property.
Okay. So there's property Syo does own that could potentially.
We assigned it to the fire station.
It starts off.
For a fire and utility.
You did, oh.
A small portion.
It could start out as EMS and then it could be.
Well, the concept is we say we find something, um, and MI HQ that would serve interim until stations up and operational. So we'd at least be able to.
That's a different location.
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't there be problems with having a temporary, um.
There's, there's only issues.
On the property that we already, or we wanna build a regular fire station.
Tons of problems.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
Yeah, quite a few problems.
It's not really feasible.
Committee felt it was worth, uh, at least letting, informing the board. Uh, so for all these steps, there are some assumptions baked in. Um, assumption one is there's a successful, the board approves, it puts on the ballot and we have a successful vote for a 2023 fall, uh, millage. Uh, we're able to hire, train and retain six firefighters, six new firefighters per year. And I think, uh, right now that's, that's gonna be a little harder, but I, I think it's doable. Uh, we're able to find and renovate, uh, suitable temporary quarters for option one point or, uh, step 1.5. And all these costs are estimates based on our best guesses using projected growth in building, increases in taxable value and cost of living increases for the next decade. But bottom line, we guessed.
So looking at November of 2023.
That's assumption that's here, yes.
And I, I will say though they're best guesses, I will thank Chief Hood and Mark and others who work so hard. These are some of the best guesses township wide. I mean, the, I have to say that the dollar estimates here are extremely well informed, more well informed than any budget or anything else we've ever produced.
And, and I will say, yes, one member of the committee had the financial expertise that, uh, that astounds me and it's well beyond my level. Uh, he spent hours explaining to me, but in depth and very analytical. So step one, uh, fully stab Zebra road station. Um, that, that involves our three firefighters. Uh, this is a total of 12 emergency response staff. Uh, that's four people scheduled per day, per day, four people on duty per day. That's the maximum capacity of the building. Three captains through the tenant, six firefighters is how it looks. Um, and we're, we're maxed out on that building. Um, administrative staff, uh, this one here, uh, this is consistent throughout all of our projector, all of our steps. Uh, we have three full-time admin staff. We have a full-time fire chief. We make our admin assistant full time, full time. And we hire, uh, a full-time training officer, uh, to begin working on consistent training and improving our training throughout, uh, the day-to-day operations. Uh, and then additionally, uh, add a half-time fire inspector to de-inspect the prevention staff. Give us one fire marshal, assistant chief and a half-time fire inspector. Uh, with, with that staffing, we're able to staff our one fire apparatus with two people and a rescue with two people. Uh, how it addresses the issues we, we identified, uh, meeting two in, two out requirements with four people on duty will meet at 90% of the time when arrive on an emergency scene. About 10% of the time that rescue will be out on another call or whatever the case may be. Uh, and they would immediately be dispatched and meet that engineer. So there may be a slight delay, but we'd be putting, um, uh, four people on the road to emergencies, to a fire emergency, uh, right at the dispatch rather than three today.
So I mean, I'm looking at it, you know, you are a utilization right here of like a hundred percent for your team. What happens when people get sick? They wanna go on vacation? I mean, do you need like a little more buffer built into that?
We don't have the buffer in the station. Um, I will say as we develop out a little further, we do get a buffer in there, but yeah, correct. Uh, six minute response time. Um, that's not gonna change our response times. Uh, simply gonna put an extra person on it. So we're only gonna meet our response time goal 40% of the time. That does get us the training officer position. Um, our ISO rating could potentially go to a five with this. Uh, we'd have more administrative staff. We'd have more firefighting staff. Um, so I, I think there's, there's ways that this, uh, could improve our fire rating. Uh, we would be able to provide BLS transport based upon support, but not paramedic level transport. I think for us, uh, for. I think for us, for me to feel comfortable with paramedic transport with twelve people, half of them would need to be paramedics. Currently, we have nine folks with no paramedic training and it'd be tough to hire six paramedics or hire three and train three. So here's our performance timeline and costs. We would need for any building fire in the township that's of significant magnitude for mutual aid companies. We'd be taking about a third or about forty percent of Ann Arbor's staff, half of Dexter's, all of Ann Arbor Townships and potentially most of Chelsea's as well. We can handle two medicals ourselves, we can handle a motor vehicle, we're short a few people if we look back to that list. There's a couple roles that go unfulfilled right away. One to two mutual aid companies for a significant extrication, two to three mutual aid companies for trailer fire. And we can handle one vehicle fire, but our guys on the line are gonna have to stop applying water, use some tools to open up maybe the hood or the door, then apply water again, less than ideal to make it work. This, again, based on those assumptions, can be accomplished in a year and a half. We get a millage vote in the fall of 2023. The board gives me the approval to start the hiring process, I need to interview some candidates, we need to get them through backgrounds, get them through physicals, get them equipped, they gotta give notice to their employer. And we could probably have them in the building training through a long orientation program in March and April first have them on the floor. Ballpark operating millage, about $2.6 million, about $1.65 mil taxes. I threw this slide in here because I think it's really pertinent. May 2018, ESCI Emergency Service Consulting International gave this board recommendations, this is almost five years ago. Recommendation one, establish a daily staffing of four. We haven't accomplished that goal yet. Replace an organizational structure with one more traditional, we have accomplished that goal. This is in the time when Chief Vurch was leaving the organization and Director Ichesko was coming in to help. And one of the goals is to hire a full-time fire chief, I've been here almost three years now. Last year, we were able to establish a full-time person in fire prevention. We still, according to ESI, this is their recommendation, add a half-time inspector and make our administrative assistant full-time. Step one point five adds capability to the southeast section of the township. And it's a couple of two and a half years to implement, a total of eighteen people on the emergency response staff. Six scheduled, six on duty per day. In both these scenarios, anytime a person takes off, we're paying overtime to backfill. We had our temporary EMS station, we have three captains, three lieutenants, twelve firefighters. Our admin staff stays consistent throughout this, as does prevention. In this, we're able to staff one fire apparatus with four and our rescue with two. Two in, two out, whenever that Zee Road Station gets on scene, we're at four on it, we're gonna meet two in, two out a hundred percent of the time because everybody's on the engine together. We'll still only meet our response time goal, I think it's higher than forty percent, but that calculus is a little tough for me to figure out. We're not gonna meet our response time goal all the time, but we'll improve some. Training officers there, staffing six a day plays into our ISO rating, so that will improve likely to a five from a six. We can staff for BLS transport and license. And potentially, in this scenario, we could hire enough paramedics to do an ALS transport service. Performance timeline and cost, four mutual aid companies for a structure fire, we can handle two medicals and a one MVA. We're down to one mutual aid company for an extrication of significant portion. One to two mutual aid companies for tractor-trailer fire, we can handle a vehicle fire completely ourselves and have all our positions filled.
So on the mutual aid, do we pay for that or do do we help Dexter and they help us back or we help Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor Township or is there a transferring of funds when that happens?
Don't transfer funds.
Okay. And then with respect to the operating millage, is the two dot five mils above the one point six five that you talked about of step one?
Or is this That's the total number.
Two dot six, and over what period of time?
That's an annual number. So we'd go from one point three five mil annually for fire protection to two point five.
In perpetuity? Okay. And it's not a ten-year millage or so many year millage, right?
I'll jump back in that, what the committee recommended was that we do a six-year millage. And that puts, that puts this millage renewal on a presidential election. And going forward, you do four, four eight or twelve year millages.
I don't wanna steal your thunder if you're gonna save that to the end, but okay.
No, no surprises. But you know, I think that was one of the things the committee discussed briefly, but we're gonna get our biggest voter turnout during our presidential election. That's when the people are gonna speak most, you know, you're getting the most, most viewpoints there.
So Andy, do you have a summary slide? Because obviously you're coming here for an ask. So is there a summary slide that says, I think right here, I like, I use the word extinguish by the way versus forgive.
That wasn't my word.
That was good. Alright, so I think what I'm hearing, just to make sure I understand, is to both staff, the required staff that you need for this station, build an EMS somewhere on Liberty and Wagner, a building you have to find, the total millage would be two point five, plus we forgive one point five million a day. Do I have that right?
Ballpark for step one point five, yes.
There's four steps he's gonna go through.
Yeah, I understand, I just wanna make sure we're going so far. Yeah, got it, okay.
Step two, build a station at Liberty and Wagner. So it's gonna bump us up twenty-four response staff. You see here, we add two more, three more lieutenants. At this point, we get to a position where we have our captains serve as the officer in charge. In charge of both stations, we have a lieutenant in charge of each station and firefighters working on the engines with lieutenants. Administrative staff stays the same, fire prevention staff stays the same. Zee Road, Zee Road is going to staff one fire, I should say apparatus, and a officer in charge vehicle. And Wagner's gonna staff one fire apparatus with three people. Two in, two out initially on arrival. Zee Road's gonna meet that requirement ninety percent plus. Wagner about ten percent of the time, both Zee and Wagner should meet our sixty, or six-minute response time goal, training officer in place. This is where we can really make some difference with our ISO rating. So we're now covering a significant, a much more significant portion of our township with the response time goal and the drive distance as well as staffing of seven or eight a day. So I think we can make some significant improvements in our ISO rating, probably a four, maybe a three, but probably a four. And here, we're concentrating back to fire apparatus, so we're not able to do BLS or ALS transport yet. And here's where we finally have the room built in, so that we can staff seven a day, but eight per shift, so we can have one person off before we have to pay overtime. But this comes with some cost and time. You know, for us to put a building in the ground, we're ballparking two to three years. You know, there's time to drop plans, there's construction time, there's equipment to purchase. I have the same conversation with that apparatus supplier who told me we're looking at a five percent increase at the end of the month. We're looking at over eight hundred days to build a ladder truck. So if we order it today, it will get in two and a half years. And this is industry-wide. Again, fire chief, not a construction manager, ballpark estimates. Although members of this committee are, they do this stuff for a living, so they feel pretty comfortable with these numbers and timelines. Step two, performance timeline and cost, we're down to only needing three mutual aid companies on a structure fire. We can handle two medicals, handle an MVA by ourselves, handle full extrication by ourselves. We've got a tractor-trailer going, might just need to borrow a tanker from one neighbor, we can easily handle a vehicle fire. This has got some timeline to to get accomplished, though, we're looking at four and a half years out by the time we have all the planning done, all the equipment in place, building in place and hire enough people to build out to this. Total operating, about four and a half million dollars, four and three-quarter million dollars, ballpark three point oh millage. Total capital costs, we're looking at about eleven point seven million between the buildings and equipment to put in there. And a ballpark point five capital millage to pay off that debt.
So the operating millage continues, but the capital millage will be shorter-lived, question mark?
I think we figured ten or twelve years for capital, the capital project millage. And then that goes away and we just run on the operating.
So is that a separate millage?
Yes.
So in the fall of 2023, there would be one for operating and one for capital?
Correct, and they'd be timer.
And capital, is capitals buildings, facilities, land acquisition and, and equipment?
Yep.
Is that what, all those?
Yep. And operating is the firefighters to put inside it, the electric bill, everything else.
Yep, yep.
Alright, so I gotta ask, maybe you guys, you know, already contemplated this, so is ninety, I think you said ninety percent of your calls are EMT related, right?
About fifty.
Oh, fifty, so the other fifty percent is fire?
Fire, car crashes, other calls, hazardous materials calls, order investigations.
Where does the, where does the percentage of death reside? Where's the risk? Let me try to understand the risk, because by risk on the emergency side, is it equally dispersed?
For the firefighters or for the
Yeah, firefighters, so when you're, when I've experienced death and injury, do I see that more on the fire-related side or more on the EMT-related side?
Both.
Is it equal?
It's tough to articulate, fires got a lot more property damage and risk there.
Here's where I'm at, I'm just asking the question, right? Have you contemplated the idea of, because right now you only have basic life support, no advanced life support. So do you maybe consider in lieu of maybe a fire station, you do advanced life support in both areas? And do the fire station maybe sometimes, so you'd still be both facilities, but now I've got advanced life support in both, but maybe again, you guys already contemplated all this, I'm just
Many different ways it could be done. Let me get to the next one.
Okay. I'll jump again, sorry.
So that might help a little more, right? Yeah, but ballpark goes, there's what we think it's gonna cost and how long it's gonna take to go, to get it there. So step three, we now add a rescue to Wagner Liberty Station. So we got four people at Zee and we got five people at Wagner Liberty Station. We can outrun advanced life support and advanced life support transport. We'll hire enough paramedics, we'll be able to put our engines with paramedic gear, so that even if we don't have a transporter, ambulance available right away, we can still get unseen, we can still use the cardiac monitor, we can still give all the drugs, the heart drugs, the pain medications and all that stuff, right from our fire engines. That bumps up our staffing a bit. And you know, we'd have nine people on duty minimum a day with eleven staff or eleven per shift. As you break down, administrative staff stays the same, we're staffing a fire apparatus at Zee and a our officer in charge, our battalion chief, and then our Wagner's gonna staff a fire apparatus and a rescue of five people total. That really improves our stats. Zee, we're gonna, pretty much a hundred percent of the time when we roll out, we're gonna be able to make our two in, two out requirement when that station arrives first. And ninety percent when Wagner does, only because that rescue might be out on a medical call. Six-minute response time, we do very well with. This meets our training officer, our goal, ISO three, four maybe. You know, the staffing gets better, that plays into our, our ISO role, having that extra rescue plays a difference, so that potentially can get us to a three. BLS transport, yes, and then ALS transport, yes.
Chief, just to piggyback on Mark's question, what does ninety percent, needing ninety percent of the two in and two out do for risk to firefighters?
The higher the number, the higher the number, the better. You know, our goal is to meet our two in, two out requirement all the time. If we arrive on scene and there's not someone confirmed in the building, and we'll use that Wagner Road example where there's only three guys showing up initially. Our other guys are coming, but they're gonna spend a couple of minutes deploying their hose lines and they can even apply some water from the outside to help help darken down the fire a little bit before the other firefighters get there and meet our two in, two out requirement. So, you know, ninety percent is much better than about thirty-five percent of the time we meet.
And the truth is, we know that these individuals might go in if you need to, if there's somebody in there. And I just wanna say that we don't wanna put you in that position.
Or two in, two out only applies when there's no known rescues. If we show up and you say, oh my gosh, my mom's upstairs, they're kicking in the door and they're going, and they're gonna, they're gonna do what they have to do. It's often very hard to slow firefighters down when they see an objective and wanna get to it.
Xander.
And at least by having three on that engine with, with three or four more coming, there's an improved margin of safety. Performance timeline and cost, we're looking at only needing two mutual aid companies for a structure fire now. We can handle three medicals, two car accidents, an extrication, we can handle a tractor-trailer fire by ourselves and a vehicle fire by ourselves easily. This is gonna take a while to accomplish, this is a six and a half plus year plan. And I think that really hinges on how many firefighters we can hire five to seven years from now. If we can only hire three or four a year, you know, we might be eight years out before we reach this objective. Total operating, clearly much more expensive, just under seven million dollars. About a three and a half mil property tax to pay for this, and ballpark same, total capital millage and then you know, again, that goes away after a certain amount of time, it'll be some sort of bond to, to pay back that equipment. Step four, this is something that if I could build my ideal fire station with just two buildings right now, we'd take step three and add a ladder truck to to the Wagner Road Fire Station as well, so we have two fire apparatus and a rescue down there. Gives us great capabilities, forty-five response staff, it gets quite a bit more expensive. I think we have some significant improvements in our ISO performance there. And our capabilities go up, but again, the cost is very high as well. Nine million, ballpark five and a half mil operating millage and a little bit more to fully fund that capital projects we need for that. And again, the committee did not recommend this, they recommend we spend the next eight to ten years to get to step three.
So is fire apparatus a term of art or something?
Fire vehicle.
Okay.
Yep, something that focuses on it, it could be an engine ladder or thing. So bottom lining it for you. You know, recommended right now, the committee's recommending you build and staff the second station at Wagner Liberty. Purchase a few acres in the Jackson Baker area in the next few years. Just lock it up right now so we actually own the property, so when the time comes, we've got it. And then purchase two to four acres on, this is spitballing, but Miller kinda east or west Delhi. Somewhere in that area, get us two to four acres there so that when our Zee Road Station is ready to be replaced, we've already got property for it as well. And I will say, there's a couple of things this does not anticipate. You know, this board's two years into a four-year term, planning commission's two years into a four-year term. Who knows what's gonna happen next time? I enjoy working with every single one of you, but you're elected officials and you could be gone. It could be a totally different board next year or two years from now. And that board may have very different ideas for Sial Township. We see Ann Arbor growing up and up and up and up, and there could be a board in the near future that says, you know what, Jackson Road's gonna grow up and up and up and up and up.
You mean vertically?
Correct, yep. And if, this plan is based on the character of the township as it exists today. If some future board decides they want fourteen-story buildings on every parcel on Jackson, and I'm still around, I'm gonna give you a different recommendation.
Current millage, so if I'm, alright, so I'm Mr. Taxpayer, let's say we go all in for five mils on this, what current millage just is gonna be paid today is?
One point three five.
For fire.
Okay, but in total, what am I paying total to Sial Township in total? What's my percentage increase in the millage? I guess that's what I'm trying to get to. Am I getting a five percent increase in my millage, a ten percent, a twenty percent? What more am I seeing if I vote for this?
Yeah, if you
Which millage?
So Sial Township, how many mils does Sial Township collect today in total?
For Sial?
For Sial.
Do you have it on the chart?
I got it right here for you. Want me to mark what we did? So there's, there's Sial, Sial Ann Arbor and Sial Dexter.
Summer and winter.
Okay, the township millage still changes whether it's Ann Arbor district or Dexter district.
Right, that's why I got them both there.
So currently
I don't wanna steal your thunder, I know what you're saying.
I, you know, I have the total
Township taxes.
Our total millage that the township collects.
Yep.
It's only on the winter bill, because we're not allowed to bill in the summer.
It's only on the winter bill, because we're not allowed to bill in the summer, as the schools are. Is two point three six nine five on primary residents. If it's a non-primary resident rate, well, it's still the same, two point three six nine five. In other words, those terms are used for the school operating, you know, non-residents pay eighteen mills. We pay. You don't, in Dexter schools, you don't pay any, Ann Arbor schools, they have voted in millages for operating, so let's not even get into that. This is two point three six nine five is our total township millage currently.
Your, your portion of the report, it's thirty-something for everything you pay, is that right?
You mean the total collect, total amount?
Yeah, for, for everyone at Levy's taxes in a given year, it's your total.
I, I have to break it down.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the shock value is going to be for, so let's say we think it's a great idea, we put it on the, on the agenda. If it doesn't get voted yes, we've done, we've done nobody any service, right? So we got to do something that we think, if we say yes to something, they're going to swallow it, lack of a better term, approve it, it's probably a better term. They're going to say we're all in, so where do you strike that balance, how much do we add, you know, ask for versus?
Mark, I, this is not quite, it's as close to an answer as I can give you, with the information I have in front of me is on page nine. There's a table, the example effect of the proposed fire millage, and it shows the steps. And so if we were to say do step three, as the committee's recommending, it provides different home values from one fifty to four fifty. Within the Ann Arbor School District, average taxable value is one eighty-six, Dexter one seventy-four. So it'd basically be seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred dollars more a year per household.
And today, I'm a Silo Township resident, and today what I'm paying to Silo Township is, you said two point three something, correct?
Two point three six nine five.
Right. And that's the operating, the public transportation, preservation, parks and pathways comprised that total.
Right, it is fire, right, so what more should I technically say? If you went to step two.
No, it does not include the fire, because that's a special assessment.
Yeah, so we have an additional one point three five.
Okay.
So it's, so it's closer to four.
Well, let's quickly add it, two three six.
One point three five.
I'm just trying to get the head of a resident, right? If I'm a resident, how am I going to look at this? I'm paying four mills right now to Silo and Silo wants to basically double that, which, depending on which one I want to do. Or increase my millage, let's say we do step one point five, they want to increase my millage by fifty percent. Can I add to that?
Our total is, total is three point seven one nine five currently. So.
Not, not everything they're proposing, they would replace the one point three five that's the fire right now, which is part of that figure with, with the two.
Oh, okay, I got it, I got it, okay, so that's already big, yeah, okay, that's about. On this chart, you've got step one is two point O, step one point five is two, so same money, but the dollars, that must not be right. Is that right? Is that on this chart?
Pardon me, I stepped away from it. Okay, so.
Column, column A, I guess, or column B, right? Taxable value mills, how's, see, there's one point three five, two, two, three point seven, so the two must be higher than that, right?
Yes, it must be that, step one point five, what mills was that at?
Actually, I think step, I think step one was one point six five.
Uh, yes. So step one is one point six five, step one point five must have been two. I think that's.
Would this be on the winter or the summer?
Well, it depends on when, winter. I would suggest it would depend on what the proposal language said. No, it is always, our levies are always on the winter bill, always. Is that statutory, Doug?
Yes, yes. Yes, we're not allowed to collect.
Okay, so it'd be winter, December.
I'm just asking folks, I try to.
That's okay.
Where's buttons, December and December? Um, thank you.
And it's on the winter right now.
Here, I'll just give a rapid update. And something, what, is it four, what, forty dollars is it?
Exactly.
And I, I would suggest to the rest of the board members, I find pages, starting on page six of the report, chief. Six through nine on the written report lays out the committee recommendations in helpful detail.
Remember Bob Hyde from the committee just made a point that may not be apparent, but I think it's worth articulating. If you look at those numbers on page nine, that's the total cost to get somewhere. Not, so, like, like step one's one point six five and then step two's two, it's not one point six five plus two. It's that two would replace the one point six five.
Points, the, the increase is point seven zero, right?
And then, yeah.
And then on page six, under committee recommendations, there's a series of numbered recommendations. If you look at committee recommendation number two, I think it, it's explained nicely here, chief. That the township should pursue a millage rate increase that will allow for the eventual implementation of step three as needed. To be the final service delivery model to the township. The committee believes this balances all the needs and, and would take about eight years to achieve. Ballot language should specify that the millage rate will only be increased based on the need as documented by the fire chief. And that the millage rate will be adjusted to ensure that the fire department's fund balance does not exceed nine months of operating expense, twelve months if necessary, fund balance. So that we're not just going to be collecting just to build an unreasonable fund balance. And the mechanism for this, you know, as it's supposed to work, you know, under these public safety SADs, is really that it would take board action every year to set how much we're going to levy. So it wouldn't just be this maximum amount from year one. And all the committees spend a lot of time talking about fiscal responsibility and talking about what would be the, you know, throttle, the throttle, as well as the?
Governor.
The governor, that's right, the throttle and the governor.
But don't throttle the governor.
I think that was the next county over.
I'll, I'll run this by the team, you guys tell me how, how you guys think, I mean, let's, in my opinion anyways, most people are only going to, when they go to vote on this, at, at eighty percent of them are just going to read it when they go to the voting booth, read what it says and make a decision right there. Most people are uninformed, some people may get informed a week or two early and read it. If I'm looking at this, this is how I would adopt this or absorb this, I mean, you guys tell me if this makes sense. If I look at a three hundred thousand dollar home, we're currently paying four oh five, we've got to bump on to step one point five of eight twenty, right? So roughly four hundred and twenty bucks, right? Well, the course of a year is roughly thirty-eight dollars a month, right? So for a little over a dollar a day, you know, Mr. Resident, your whole family is protected with, you know, an additional statement, right? I mean, that's, and if you look at it that way, that sounds pretty reasonable, right? A buck a day, who wouldn't pay, who wouldn't pay that?
You should be on the campaign committee.
Well, I'm just trying to think of a way you could make this absorb, because if you just look at that big bucket of costs, some people might, you know, ooh, ouch. But that seems pretty reasonable to me.
Andy?
You know, a dollar a day?
So, on page nine of nine, can I ask a question of you or people or Terry or whoever the numbers guys or gals are on that committee?
Mr. Perry?
Uh, yeah, but so, so we've got average Ann Arbor School District versus, so just for people to know, you pay taxes based on whether in Silo Township, whether you live in the Ann Arbor School District or the Dexter School District, and that's why there's the breakdown. And, and if you happen to be in the more, slightly more expensive or more expensive, uh, school district, Ann Arbor, if you have the average house of the taxable value, and that's not market value, that's not true cash value, that, that's, that's, well, half of that less whatever the CPI increases are for the, I don't want to get too much into tax rate theory here, but the assessed value upon the taxable value, rather not assessed, taxable value upon which you pay taxes, ad verum for realty. If you, if, if your TV is a hundred eighty-six thousand, you currently pay two fifty-two, is that right, folks? And then if we go to option three, that's up to seven ninety-three, correct? That's not, that's not seven ninety-three more, that's, or is it seven ninety-three more?
That's replacement, so it's seven two fifty-two.
Two fifty-two is included in the seven ninety-three, so it's five hundred and some change.
And, and, and if your house is worth half a million dollars, then that's the true cash or the market, then it's going to be two fifty, less whatever, how, if you've had it longer, it's going to be less than that. Then you're down here at three thirty-eight, going to ten sixty-three, correct?
Correct.
Hey, can we offer two separate, because what you don't want to do is like overshoot it and then they shoot the whole thing down. Can we offer two separate millage, like a kind of a good, better, best plan or something like that?
So, what, what we did recommend is, and number three is what the chief mentioned, is, is two questions tie barred together. So, one for operating and one for capital, okay? So the capital one would basically allow us to build the second station. So if there's, you know, the public opinion is we don't want to build a whole new station. Presume, you know, the voters could say no to the capital one, we're not going to build the second station, we're just Silo Township, we don't need it. But they can say yes to the operating, okay? And, no, go ahead, chief.
That would then, there'd be a tie bar to limit only funds to staff our Zeeb station.
Exactly, that would automatically take us back to step one to just, so that would be that, like, you know, just a little bit better. And then, but they'd be tie barred so that if we, if the capital one didn't, you know, it would, it would assure voters that if they vote no on the capital question, we'd go back to that step one. So it really in effect, Mark, does give voters two choices between kind of step three and step one by tie barring the two questions.
Here's a, I'm thinking, I'm just talking out loud here, right? It's, you know, as, as trustees, our job, I mean, should be, what is the maximum safety level possible? And that would be step four. Now it's up to the voters to decide whether they want to pay for that or not, but us as trustees should say, hey, we want your safety always at the best level it should be. Now, whether you decide you want to pay for that, that's now, I mean, this is the ultimate democracy at that point, it's back to them to decide what they want to fund. If there's a way to get some opposition, it, we need to kind of get some sell-in here, right? Hey, here's what you're going to get, Mr. President, like this wonderful presentation. Some of that's got to get out into the ether, Pam Boyd I know can help with that, and Kathleen and other folks can help get that story out. And you decide, you know, here's package A, package B, package C, the bronze, gold, silver package or platinum package, whatever it is. And here's, you decide what safety level you want, Mr. or Mrs. Township person, and you vote for it. That, to me, would make the most sense, I, I think we should always go for the absolute highest, but why wouldn't we? As township trustees, always want the maximum level of safety that we can, we can offer.
So, chief, I don't know if you or another committee member wants to talk about the committee's discussion on that idea, about going for step four with the governor and the throttle, why the committee didn't recommend that.
Well, first of all, if we go for a six-year millage, we won't have time to max that millage, we won't, we won't have time to reach all the way to step three by the time we need to renew the millage anyways. Because step three is going to take us eight years, and if we have a six-year millage.
Okay, so maybe we just do a good, better, best on step, you know, one, well, two, three and four, two, I'm sorry, step one point five, two and three, and we have a good, better, best package. But you get the idea I'm trying to get across, is what's, max of, we, the township should offer the most we could possibly offer. You know, share the, the, the cost benefit analysis and let the voters ultimately decide what they want to or don't want to fund.
The concern with that is, they vote no, and that's it, we're done.
Right.
Well, the other concern is that we vote, if we, that's why I think you have to offer various packages. If I just offer one package, let's say we go for two and they vote no, then you're out of one point five. So at least, I like to try and get us to the minimum level every time, so there's separate millages presented, so at least, hey, we need the base one, at least one point five, let's shoot for two.
Right, that except for it's on a new card. So like, I mean, when you say, like, offer packages, do you mean like have all these things on the ballot?
I mean, I don't know all the mechanics of how it works, I'm just thinking it's software salesman. You know, we, we, our company helps mitigate clients' risk, this is no different, right? You've got a risk of fire or death, how much comfort do you want to have? We offer as trustees, we are going to present the optimal, ideal package we think that, that you should be, that should be afforded to you. Whether you want to fund or not is up to you.
Yeah, but like, these folks who've done a little research or maybe have a sense of community, might, might have a feel for what is, will have community support.
Yeah, let, let me give, as long as I can talk, since, since we, we had these meetings, I can give you a little bit of insight. So, we came at this all from different, there was residents from more rural parts of the community, residents from more populated, I'm a business owner, obviously, in the community. You know, Lance from the fire department, Jessica coming from the board, so we have a wide range of perspectives. One of the things we looked at was, obviously, my property, being a business property and also being a higher taxable value when it's finished than a residence, I'm going to actually pay more dollars in tax than an average resident, right? So, I have to think about that not only for myself, but I'm also the DDA, I want other businesses in the community to do well. Part of it is I'm also looking at it from the aspect of what will pass with the voters, but also what would I do in the same situation? But what would get the broadest consensus support? We looked at all of these different options and said, what do we think doing our portion or microchasm or microeconomic situation of where we are within our communities, within the township? Who would do what and why? I think option three got the best overall support because it's a mixture of, or step three really, it's a mixture of getting to step three. Plus, it has the benefit of having, at least at this point, servicing the needs of everyone in all the quadrants of the township as best as possible. Plus having this progression where we're going to get to it. One of the things I told chief was, and this is really true, because when you look at how the options and how the steps are going to work, especially with the six-year millage, just knowing how construction works, having that lovely experience, we're going to have to go, obviously, not only through planning, construction bidding, everything else. It's going to take a lot of time before we need more of that, those operational dollars, capital dollars will be needed right away, and we'll get those in the bond. But we're going to have more time before that operational dollars comes in, mostly near the end of that millage.
So, what I think you just said, I'm always making, repeating what I think I just heard, you're saying just going to go for step three and you don't see a lot of resistance for that?
I think there's going to be financial resistance, especially from people that are much more fiscally conservative and, to a point, I, I'm worried about it. Obviously, I'm going to have a higher taxable value on my building. But I look at it from, if I don't do anything, and the fire department has what they have now, which is great people and, you know, good equipment, maybe not great, amazing equipment, but good equipment. If my building catches on fire, thank God we have sprinklers, but if I have to wait for Ann Arbor, after seeing, after donating my other small residents that was on the property, the fire department, seeing how fast that caught on fire and how fast that burned down, even a new building's going to, fifteen minutes in, it's going to be destroyed. So, it's whether I pay the, pay the premiums and insurance or something else.
So what's really, but how, how, how did vote, how was it with Jessica?
It was overwhelmingly supported, but it was on a November twenty nineteen ballot, so we had only about seventeen percent turnout. And, and so I, it was not the way I want to do business as a board member, policymaker. I, I want to say one, one thing about it, even if step four were what we should do, I don't think we could get to step four. Because just practically speaking, with all Because just practically speaking, with all the operational challenges of hiring and, you know, the building and and equipment. So so that's where, you know, if you look at this, Mark, it's really about the timeline, that's one of the reasons why the committee is recommending a shorter millage. So looking at November twenty-three to November twenty-eighth and November twenty-eight presidential election. I think that's a good time to say, hey, do we need to look at step four, five, six, wherever we're going? But that operating millage, we're going to have a chance to come through, I'm not confident that we, I don't think it's realistic. We couldn't put step four on and get that done in five years. I'm sure we could put step three on and I'm confident we could get.
Jessica, Jessica, this is this is David, um can I can I talk for a couple of minutes? I have a couple of comments um that I want to address from something what Mark said. Mark, you you mentioned that some folks are going to walk into the ballot box on November and that'll be the first time they read about the fire station. Well, the committee had has thought about that and one reason we wanted to have this meeting, this particular meeting in December was so that we could get a decision by now. Um so that would the committee could start doing the PR work, the groundwork that's going to be necessary to advertise this throughout township. Um many of the firefighters will have to, um you know, will have to have one or two firefighters go to every one of these meetings, possibly the chief, possibly a couple of the tenants. Several of the members of the committee, we've all agreed that we will work to um promote this uh throughout the township. Meeting with all the HOAs, as many as we can from now until the end of October. But we wanted, we hope, as I said, we hope to have this last month, we having it this month, which is great. Hopefully, we can have a decision by um hopefully in the next in the next um board meeting so that we can get started on this. I would hate to see this drag out until February or March, um because that seriously reduces the amount of time we have to to educate the folks on why we need this. And going to your um going to your suggestion to go for the go for the big, go for the big, go for it all, step four, if you will. Um as Jessica was saying, step four is at least eight years out, and I think that's, uh no offense to the chief, I think that's being optimistic. Um uh and it's not and and although it might seem like we need it right now, we certainly can't manage it right now. Um and we so the committee thought that step three was the most viable option to shoot for in the next six to eight, six to ten years. Um and if we go with a three point five millage and a point five operating millage, and I think, chief, I think we were talking about a fifteen-year bond. So that five, and correctly, Mark, Mark Perry could could really really step in on this, but I think we were talking about a fifteen-year bond. So that five point five capital improvement village would be a fifteen-year village. But the three point five millage for to to begin the operating of for step three would actually be implemented. Um initially, we probably only asked, uh we would suggest that the board only levy one point six five so that we can immediately do step one. And then in twenty twenty-five, we would perhaps go with two or two point five so that we could either begin on step one point. Uh so that we could either do one point five or begin on step two. And then we would probably in twenty-six or twenty-seven, we go to three or three point five, so it would be a gradual increase. Um a uh uh the throttle would be the chief coming to you and saying, okay, we need an extra half mill this year, an extra two mill, whatever it is. And the governor would be that when the fund balance for the fire department gets to whatever number the uh the the whatever numbers decided that be. Which is either, I think, nine or twelve months of operating, that then that that would be the uh we would we would cut back on the millage. So that we would only then levy what we need to maintain the fund balance and pay for our pay pay for the firefighters.
Up to the limit. I'm sorry. Dave, you know, I think about this, you you I think you make a good point, I think if you, all right, go, you you let's just say you put the three on, right? I'm a I'm a voter, I'm going to go in, first of all, it's fire, it's safe, yeah, my first reaction is going to be, I probably want to vote for this, right? Why would I say no? And then you're kind of, I'm kind of playing, millage is kind of like casino chips, right? I'm not really doing the math that a millage equals hard dollars to me, it's like that's why casinos give you chips instead of cash, right? So I and and also, a lot of people are going to vote, aren't even necessarily impacted by the millage, right? If I'm an eighteen-year-old kid, hey, I I can sign up for my dad to pay the three point five, what's he care, right? He's going to say, yeah, so this I contemplate this more, and if you're going to do the David, the the campaign, the get out there campaign, you got the fire folks going out there, getting with the HOAs. This might actually might swallow pretty easy as I'm thinking about it more and more.
We do it right.
Yeah, yeah.
We just need to move on it quickly.
Yeah, agree, agree.
So I want to ask a question, um so the ballot proposal, I'm reading in the page seven of nine. The ballot proposal for the operating millage should specify that should the capital millage fail and the operating millage pass. The board will be allowed to levy the necessary millage to complete step one. And step one, like, won't step one already have passed because step one is just operating millage, right?
Right, but.
So why do you why do you need it to be tie barred? Because it because it looks like for step three, it's three dot five for operating millage. And I'm thinking of operating millage really as mostly personnel, am I right on that?
Personnel, building.
Personnel and.
Building maintenance.
Right, right, and a capital ma- capital millage, I'm thinking of things, structures and vehicles, am I generally right on that?
Yep.
So if the operating millage passes and the capital doesn't, well, you've already got that operating millage money. Why do you need, why do you need the board will be allowed to levy the necessary millage to complete step one? Because you've already got, you've just gotten three point five mills.
Only step one, John, it's fiscal responsibility, because if we don't have a mill there.
So to so to to milli- to millage to complete step one only.
Correct, that's the intention.
One point six five mils.
Only, so 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 we limit to allow to, you're you're limiting the spending to step one only.
To be responsible.
Because you've already got the go ahead.
Because, no, we wouldn't have the go ahead because the language of the with tie bar, if you don't have a building to expand your operations into. We're not going to take all this operating money.
Yeah, we can't put the firefighters in here.
So is that and and I assume that, you know, you'll run this past legal and the wording and all that kind of stuff, whether.
Well, no, I mean, the the I think this is just a presentation, if if the board decides that they want to go ahead. At a future meeting, what I would expect is a pretty simple motion, you know, directing the chief and the committee. To work with legal counsel to come up with a ballot proposal language to bring back to the board. And then the board would vote to place to call.
Put around the ballot, right.
Call for a special election, November twenty twenty-three and put it on the ballot.
And how this works is you need bonds because bonds are the loans against the mills that we do, is that correct? So part parcel of this is bonding.
Mm-hmm. For capital improvements, yes.
It would come if this passes.
Bonding for capital improvements or can we bond, would you bond also for operations or no?
No.
No, no, no.
No.
If I may, um hi, Mark. If I may, um we decided, we discussed at great length. Should we do it in a single millage under Act thirty-three, which is a public safety.
I got it, okay.
And um. There's two components, you have the capital piece, which is bricks and mortars and tires and stuff like that.
Sure.
And and that would be funded by a bond. And why would we do it, break it up as a bond? Because a bond is you have a fixed amount of capital you're going to raise, so just amortize it on a straight line. It's a fixed amount millage rate year in, year out, separated. And you can do it ten years, fifteen, not to exceed fifteen years. And then the other path with the second millage under Act thirty-three, which is the police and fire safety for operating only, not for capital. Why would you split it out? Because operating, it's very, very hard to forecast expenses, particularly with inflation. So we said, okay, let's set this um on its own track. Because that millage rate could go up and down as um union contracts. Call for as electric inflation, gas, whatever. And um so what we thought was with the tie bar is is that if if the opera or the capital doesn't pass. But the operating does pass. The operating has a lot of the personnel, a lot of the operating expenses that would normally go into or needed.
Right, of course.
And that's where the governor and the throttle come in. Under whatever, um whether it's a one eighty-eight or a one thirty-three.
So that's a way of convincing the voters that you're convinced, you're fiscally prudent about the whole approach.
The transparency is is that for the capital millage, it's fixed for capital. Under headly, you can't, whatever your language specifies that the voters are approving, that's the only thing it can be used for. So if you pass a capital, you can't use capital millage for operating, you can only use operating millage. Uh and that's the the I I'm not going to say it's the least transparent, but it's certainly the most variable, there's not much fixed. And so um with the with the operating millage rate, your language is going to be fixed in headly and that's the only thing you can use it for. So it's operating expenses, reserve for replacement of your ten-year, fifteen-year equipment. Um but the throttle and the governor piece of it, the governor is the language in the in the the ballot. Was it three, three and a half mill, whatever, whatever, whatever the mill is, that's the maximum amount you can um raise, that's it, period. But you can go less and each and every year, the board of trustees would have to um uh set a maximum millage rate for that specific tax year. But the throttle piece of it is the nine months of reserve or the twelve months reserve. So once, once you maximize it nine months, that millage rate automatically goes down. Because you can't exceed nine months of reserve. For extenuating circumstances, you can go to twelve, but again, for cause that the board of trustees would have to determine to make that exception. And and so for transparency for the taxpayers, let's split them out in two pieces. One is certainty on capital because it's a straight line amortization. And the operating piece is as variable as your operating expenses are, but not to exceed nine or twelve months of reserve. And once you hit that ceiling, you guys have to roll it back.
Yeah, very responsible.
So um and and let me, I I I do from a personal standpoint, I think the six-year on the operating is short sighted. I think you ought to go for ten, but that that's my personal feeling. But let's just say both failed, both ballot questions failed. The one point three five that's currently authorized by the voters is still in place until um twenty twenty-eight or nine.
Twenty-eight.
Uh so you have the safety now.
Would this undo the one three, one dot three five if it passes?
If, yes, because you're what you're doing is you're amending or you're you're asking a new ballot question. The one point three five is in, one point three five mills is in the three or three and a half, whatever step or option you go with. So you extinguish the one point, the current authorization and reauthorization.
That'll be clear in the wording?
Yes.
If the board decides to proceed.
Yes would be the, yes, yes, yes.
So the timing would be at some point, and so what if the board says yes to this but no to the one dot five? How does that come off the words, the one dot five extinguishment?
The one, the one point.
The one point five million dollar loan extinguishment.
They're related, are they?
Oh, uh they're not related whatsoever. Well, if it fails, if it fails, you continue to take out, you do a fund balance transfer out of his current one point three five millage. To the general fund and he still becomes short in his budget each and every year.
Yeah, he can't meet the goals that he just laid out.
So so I guess, when I I guess what I'm getting at ultimately is the question of timing. Like the one point five might be a budget thing and the 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 three point five and the point five might be a timing thing with respect to when can we get it to legal and vetted? And when can we, you got to publish it and you have to all the stuff you need to do. Like, what's the timing I uh during which the board will likely need to 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 uh take this up?
I would suggest within the month, I mean, if you're talking about a November twenty twenty-three, John, and chief, I mean, it it just in terms of. Now, there's a deadline somewhere in August, John, of putting, but but realistically, we talked about getting a board decision by February.
Um we being the board did or your committee?
Our committee.
Or committee?
I I would say, you know, I don't know what's all, you know, and, you know, in May and August, I I don't know what's on the ballot. But it would seem to me that you would have to have something done within the first quarter.
Yeah.
So that it's it's you can start educating the.
No, I I just, no, I just appreciate.
Because it's mid-fourth quarter is when you're going to ask the question.
Right, and this is also dependent, John, as you pointed out, on some other policy things, on some ordinance development and.
Um.
Can I ask a question, Mark? Um, Mark, could you explain a little bit about the concept of the forgiveness of the one point five million?
Sure, sure. Um, over the years. This board has made prudent business decisions where at the end of fiscal year, you had excess cash. That accumulated in a in a general fund reserve fund, it's accumulated, I should seven or eight million, whatever, whatever the number is. Or at the time before you wrote the one point five loan, all right? So you had, let's just pick seven million in that reserve fund that the taxpayers had paid. And through prudent business management, you're able to accumulate reserves. Then in nineteen, the voters approved the fire millage to renovate the um the firehouse. And, you know, I I remember when I ran some numbers for for Jack and Dave and the other board. Um, there were a lot of assumptions that were not built in to the final business deal that this board made.
Right.
So I think my forecast was like one point six million dollars in capital and it ended up being three million and some change, so.
I think there was some scope change too.
Yes.
Major scope change.
So with that, and and the township entered into a construction agreement, not the fire department, but the township did. And it ended up being three plus million, we were short million and a half. So there was a decision to make that we would loan, the general fund would loan the fire department one point five million dollars. Interest free for twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
So we took one point five million out of an investment fund generating interest income. And we wrote an interest-free loan to the fire fund for twenty years and they would pay back seventy thousand a year. So fast forward to today, today we're saying, okay, we need to examine the structural difficulties or deficiencies in the fire fund. And we're going to build maybe a firehouse and we're going to uh take care of pensions, we're going to take care of a lot of things. But while we're doing that, in the end, we're now recommending a millage rate of one, two, three, four additional mills, whatever it is. And it'll correct those structural difficulties and now the taxpayers are going to pay a second time to take that additional money and pay off the one point five million dollar loan. So what you're doing is you're taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other, but yet the taxpayers are going, at the end, are going to be holding. Um, um, it's not a slightly higher millage rate to pay off a loan of an interest-free loan that you're losing interest from from your investment accounts. So um th- this is complicated, um and and without doing graphs and whatever, it's hard for me to explain. But the simple of it is, is that you had seven point, you had seven millions, you wrote a loan, interest-free loan. Now you're going to ask the taxpayers to increase the millage rate to pay off that one point five million and pay back the fund. That's what it amounts to. That's the, the, within the tax advocacy arena, you call that double taxation.
Much more eloquent than my explanation, correct?
The one and a half million dollars was spent, it's got to come from somewhere. That is the net of it, right?
And the taxpayers already paid it when it built up that reserve fund accrual.
What is it, I mean, you guys are more adept at this. I mean, what is the heartburn of us forgiving this debt? Does that cause a major storm?
You know, I, I think there's probably different perspectives. This, this policy decision we made was, I'm looking, November tenth, twenty twenty. So it was with the prior board. It was unanimous, so Donna, Kathy, and I were on the board. I voted for it.
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous. And the reason it was unanimous was because it was presented to us as, well, do we bond? Or do we just use the general fund reserve? Well, bonding, you know, we have enough in the general fund, it'd be interest-free, it'd be cost-free.
I got all that, but the question is.
But what I want to say is.
Given, what what problem does that cause?
Yeah, I was going to say, what impact would that have? Are we counting on that for other things?
That might be a question for Mark.
Well.
Let me, let me just finish, finish. One thing is that what we didn't understand when we made this motion was that the liability was was that the finance, that the fire department's fund balance would go into the negative, and they would have no ability to realize any of their vehicle acquisition, any of these capital plans that we actually adopted at the very same meeting. And so I say as a board member, I made a mistake in that vote. I, you know, I, while I had a lot of heartburn about it, I went along with it, and I made a mistake. And I did not understand that it could then interpret it to put the liability onto the fire department. There was always an agreement that there was seventy-five thousand they'd pay back. The board at that time, the information we had, was that they had sufficient funds to meet their capital goals and pay back the seventy-five, when the truth was, they didn't.
If I could add to that, as a board member who voted at that time, we were not told that this one point five million was in the future going to be tagged on as a liability for the fire department. We were never told, wait, 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 wait. Just call time.
I just copied that, same and I.
He's choking on a peanut.
Just analogy.
He can test the system right now. He's had six minutes worth.
So the way this has evolved is very different from what we were expecting. And I, too, made a mistake with the vote. If I had known all of this, I would not have voted.
That's all, I'm not questioning, that's all one on the bridge. I'm just, the question we have now is, is it okay, I mean, Will, is there anything else that we're missing here? Is there?
Well, I think.
You've been quiet this whole time, you've been rather silent.
No, I've been trying to listen to everybody. I absorb everything. I do have some thoughts, but on this particular thing, I think the key thing that nobody understood at the time is the difference between bonding. That if the, if the township had bonded, and the fire department or the township had been paying it off in increments, then it wouldn't have affected the fire fund in the same way as this internal loan. I think that's the problem.
Oh, yes, it would have.
Well.
Because it would have been out of the fire fund. It would have been the same bottom line effect. They gotta pay money back.
Well, I, I think on a, on a, on one level, that's true. But in terms of how it's viewed by the state as a liability, it would have been different. It wouldn't have, it wouldn't have had the same impact. This is, this is, it's a accounting kind of question. But it has had, because it was an internal loan, the impact on the fire fund has been profound in terms of how, you know, we account for it. It's, so so, but I think, I think in terms of my own understanding of this, the difficulty is that we have this fund balance. The board was trying to make a prudent decision about that fund balance, not the fire fund, but the fund balance, the general fund. And the loan by by sort of saying, okay, well, it's going to be refilled over time, it's going to be paid back. That fund balance, they were thinking, well, that'll keep the fund balance, you know, sort of replenished over time. And and if we forgive this, you know, basically, we're just saying, okay, that's one point five million less in the fund balance. Fund balance has gone down. That's probably the effect, but I think, you know, Mark's point is, it's it's kind of a sunk cost, you know.
Yeah, I'm impressed at this point, right? The loan is gone.
Yeah, it's gone.
I, I'm not, I'm not here to cast aspersions or criticize prior board actions. I'm just trying to figure out, will there then be one point five million dollars missing from something else that we got to scramble to find?
It's gone, it's a sunk cost.
So just be, really, one point five million no longer due from the fire fund to the general fund.
There's a receivable, the airline somewhere, it says fire department, one point five million.
And 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 we're not required to keep reserves at a certain level, or are we required to account for? I mean, like, are we going to have to account to?
There is a separate general fund fund balance issue, but I think the point is, it's the one point five million has been spent, the little increments that are coming back into the general fund in theory
Is it going to go to a deficit otherwise?
Are really going to make that up. It's, it's a sunk cost.
Okay.
But if you have enough of those, you know, costs coming out of the the fund balance, the general fund balance, then, you know, then you will get to the, the, down to the level where you can't cover.
And and so I think it's philosophical, like, I wouldn't want to, as a practice, have this board say, we're making a loan, oh, we forgive it, we're making a loan, oh, we forgive it, okay.
So how do you make sure that doesn't happen a second time, right?
How I would make sure that that doesn't happen a second time is make sure that the board is better informed with better information before we make big decisions. And so I think that how we make sure it doesn't happen again is that the board, we, you know, I will own my mistake as a board member in voting for that. And we, the board, will say, we are changing the decision of the prior board. We are paying for the fire station renovation out of the general fund, right? So it's not that we're forgiving the loan, but just make it clear.
Yeah, that's all good. It's just you guys obviously do a really good job the next go around with all this stuff, not to come back here again for the, can you forgive us a second?
Okay, I want to, Mark, I'd like to say something here, too.
Can I just, I'll turn it to you next. I just want to say, in a sense, we didn't make that mistake when we purchased the land for the new fire station, right? We didn't say, this is a loan to the fire department. We just said, we're just buying this land.
Correct.
We know that the primary purpose of this is to make it available for a second fire station. We didn't burden the fire department with the, we just paid for it out of the general fund.
Because we legally couldn't do it, we have to own the land, so.
Yes.
Because.
I want to say this also is a reflection of no planning, no capital improvement plan. When all of this came about with the prior board, there had been no planning. It was a sort of haphazard, oh, we need to do this, we need to do it now. Everyone went along with it. You know, we asked a few questions, we were assured we had plenty of money in the general fund. Okay, well, but we weren't told that at some point some of this would be cast as a liability on the fire department. We were never told that.
It was a loan. Anybody in this room, you take out a loan?
Liability.
You gotta pay it back.
We were told.
It was, it was very simple. It was, so it's no question. I think, I think that's, I mean, I think that that's water under the the bridge. And we'll have different opinions on it, but but I have to say, in terms of our fund balance, we don't have any requirements for fund balance, we have recommendations for our policy. We set the fire fund, fund balance recommendation at nine months of operating. We just took them, you know, at the last budget, the last time we adopted the budget is when the board kind of said the liability will be moved, you know, in that process and through finishing up the audit and all of that. So we took you from, what, seven hundred thousand dollars fund balance to negative five hundred thousand in one fell swoop. So what I'm saying is, John, to your question, the general fund will go from, you know, twice our fund balance policy minimum downward. And the fire department will go from a negative fund balance up to something that the chief can begin to work with.
Makes sense. So that's to tie into my next question. Our recommendation number four, quote, "The township board should revise its fund balance policy so that equipment and vehicle replacement reserves are encumbered and do not count against the nine to twelve-month unrestricted fund balance." So what's the fund balance policy? What is unrestricted fund balance, and what does it mean to not encumber those? Someone?
Fund balance policy, the board adopts, we adopted our first one in February twenty twenty-one. The unrestricted fund balance, there are components of fund balance. We could use more of the components than we typically do. Unrestricted means just what it is, it can be used for anything. Assigned can be, you know, the board is, the, the, the chief is thinking ahead to that ladder truck and saving up, say, fifty thousand dollars a year for that, that might be assigned. Committed is going to be a vote of this board to say, you know, we really should plan ahead more than the next minute, let's look ahead the next year, that's it. And we should say, we should commit X dollars for that O P E D liability. So the fund balance had, you know, should have a lot of components. Right now, it's one hundred percent unrestricted.
So you're talking specifically, this recommendation number four ties in with the Township of Scioto Debt Management Policy as enacted on March ninth, twenty twenty-one.
No, that's the debt management policy, it's the fund balance. It's called the Order of Resource Use and Fund Balance Policy.
Okay. Anyone who's had a doctor, so I can have it.
In twenty, in March, February or March of twenty twenty-one. I have all of our policies posted on the policies webpage.
Thank you.
My clarification, as as we just, as Jessica just commented, we have a five hundred thousand dollar negative fund balance at the fire department. We got to get that fixed. I've never seen such a thing before, actually. And do I, and I'm not, there are a variety of ways to to fix that. I just want to make sure that if we're talking about, that the reason that got there, and it got there in such a hurry, because as you said, it went from seven hundred plus to five hundred minus.
Correct.
That relates back to this one point five. I wasn't here, so I don't have the history, but I do know we've got to get that situation.
And the change happened in the books in about July or August of this year, when we were finalizing the year-end entries for March twenty twenty-two on it.
So is that additional? Well, that's why I want to make sure we understand that.
Changes occurred.
That's the big difference, if we do what we're talking about here.
If if it was a bond, if we had paid for the fire station with a bond, and we were paying it off, even if we were paying it off from the fire fund, it wouldn't appear in the same way. That's what I understand. Part of the, part of the problem is that we put this whole one point five million debt on the fire fund, not in the form of a bond that's being paid off, but.
Under operating revenue.
Has part of it been paid off?
Yes.
Couple of years' worth.
Seventy-five or a hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, so I would, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of, you know, the forgiving the remainder of that one point five.
So let's say, so let's say it's one point two then, because or whatever, one, one.
One point four three five.
Three five or whatever it is.
One point five.
What about Township Manager Thompson's point? This is different than a current fund balance?
No, this, this would, this would take care, we're in negative five hundred thousand dollar fund balance because of this negative, because of this one point five billion dollar loan. So we take that away, and fund balance goes back up. It it solves it.
Minus five hundred, we eviscerate one point four, it's going to go back to nine hundred plus, right?
Yeah, which is actually, yeah, which is actually what it was up until we finalized the numbers for this audit.
Easy.
So this would just take action at the next board meeting. If there's enough interest in it, I'd be happy to work with Mark on this.
I think next might be pushing.
I'm, oh, I'm interested.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I cut you off, my apologies. My apologies.
Okay. I think there is interest.
Enough interest.
Yes, in doing this at the next board meeting.
Yeah.
And I wanted to ask Mark Perry a question about timing.
It's easy.
In terms of the loan forgiveness, is sooner, what's your opinion on that? Is it?
The timing of extinguishing a loan.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
I think you need to, I think you need to consult with your CFO. And I think you need to consult with your, your audit partner. Is it, let's just say the amount owed is one point four million, let's just say that number. Do you want to, but you also have a minus five hundred. Do you want to do the whole one point four or just the five hundred to take you to zero? Negative, you're, so you're at, you know, I, I don't know the consequences because I believe there may be a consequence with your investment account. Because I, I know you took, you took one point five out of an investment account. So it reduced it from seven million down to.
Well, it's in different instruments though.
Yeah, it's in different instruments, but I think you need to understand the financial consequence of, is it a full one point four you write down, or you write down
It's not in there.
Nine hundred thousand, so you get rid of the minus five hundred? You should have a plan. And I don't know enough about your business, your, you know, the the finance business of this township to give you a recommendation other than make sure your financial advisors have input into this thing. And because I, I just don't know, and does it satisfy treasury? You know, because they've got a, they, I'm not saying they're a stakeholder, but certainly, they had, they've had audit comment on it.
And if I could share the information I do have after, you know, wrestling with this for the last nine months or so. So the auditor did not recommend that we do this or that we don't do this. They said that this is a policy decision of the board. Two, treasury does not want to see negative fund balances. This doesn't happen to be one of the items requested in our corrective action plan, Mark and Donna. But clearly, it would be nice, I think, for Scioto Township to be able to say that we've also addressed that negative fund balance that's sticking out conspicuously in our audit. I mean, just to try to help, help that out. And and then I'll, I'll also say, we've, I've talked with Miller Canfield, too, who does our, our, our bond counsel, you know, and basically what they've explained is there's this, you know, lack of sophistication at the state level, where you actually get kind of penalized for doing internal loans, that there's been other communities that get in a pickle. And so most people just say, don't do that, you know, don't do a loan like that. Either just pay for it outright with existing fund balance or bond.
I guess I would just say that it sounds as if we got into this problem by making a perhaps not well-informed decision a couple of years ago. And I would suggest that we want to make a well-informed decision on our way out of this problem so that we don't have an unforeseen, we didn't think about this. And I'm starting my fourth week here, so I don't have any historical knowledge. But the difference between if we're going to forgive the loan, forgiving it today or forgiving it in three weeks, isn't going to make a whole lot of difference, I don't think. I would think we'd want to be very comfortable that we understood all of the implications. That's, that's all I'm getting at.
And I'm looking at Mark, you know, I think this should go on the February ninth. I think this should go on the February ninth meeting.
February fourteenth.
What's, what's the, what's our next, what's our first February meeting?
February fourteenth, I think.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, great, Valentine's Day with you guys.
Be my Valentine.
We'll have to have red M and M's.
I, I will take care of that.
No, I mean, you're, no, that's, thank you. But, no, because on January fourth, we've got our park, we've got our Parks and Rec Open Space Master Plan and that generated comment. We've got the Plant Moran Audit, that's a big deal. We've got a public hearing for the Three Hundred North Sea. We've got the Commercial Rehabilitation District. We've got Short Term Financial Heritage. We've got Heritage Wood, wastewater treatment. So I think we, I, I mean, I think, can we wait two more weeks?
It doesn't make a bit of difference, nothing, nothing going to change, I agree with you. What's the difference really?
So if we do that at February fourteenth, would we also want to set February fourteenth as a goal to have some attorney drafted language for what this proposal would look like?
Yeah, what proposal it means.
Yeah, because that would be mid-February. And if we need more discuss, then we'll have something to discuss. You know, we can send it back, it can come back February twenty eighth for board approval to place it on the ballot if we want to. But at that point, I don't know, Chief and Mark, I mean, I think we're going to need a couple of weeks with an attorney to, to work on this and then get kind of an explanation to the board and the public.
The complexity of all these moving pieces, I highly recommend bond counsel, I, I really do.
Agreed.
That is augmented by an accounting person, finance person that understands your books and records.
Yep.
And election counselors, election law.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're going to need, yes, exactly, a P A thirty three and a one eighty eight if that's what you decide to go.
Agreed.
I want to mention, I've talked to several committee members. And I heard from more than one committee member that there was a sense of urgency to get this moving. Now, maybe February is fine, but I did hear from people that January was what they were hoping for, but I, so I don't know. I guess, Ryan, I'd like to hear from you on that.
Yeah, I would say that the sooner the better.
See, that's what I agree with people.
I would agree that there's a general consensus of that across most of us. Obviously, from a marketing angle, the fact that we, if we know that the board is going to approve it and will appear on the November ballot, if we know that sooner, we can start setting these meetings. It's just a lot better to know sooner rather than later. I realize, at least from what you just brought, Trustee Riser, that it sounds like there's quite, quite an agenda for next week. So looking forward to that.
I want to give you the adequate space and time.
That's the other, that's the other side of the token that I kind of worry about. I, I would, I, I almost worry about that, we wouldn't get that next week, but.
Well, the reality is that putting the agenda out happens within probably the next forty eight hours. And that's really tight to do the kind of work that we're talking about here. I don't think we want to put ourselves in a position of rushing this.
I don't think.
I think the first February meeting is reasonable.
I think it's reasonable too, I think was, I think honestly, and I, I know we didn't say we would take action and we shouldn't take action, but, but I do think either today or at our next regular meeting, we should at least have a, a motion that, you know, directs the fire chief and committee members, you know, one or two, as, as identified, the ability to confer with our township attorneys on the, on the township's behalf to get this language together and bring it back to the board.
Why do we need a motion to do that?
I don't understand.
Yeah, I think that was a long one.
Yeah, we don't need a motion to do that.
Oh, well, no, no, get the ball going.
But I do, I do.
No, I mean, I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we just need to all be in consensus about, one, the expenditure of township resources. There's also been discussion before that the, 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 the board or an officer needs to authorize anybody outside the township from being in those attorney-client privileged. So that's all I'm making the point to.
Okay.
I could even be on the consent agenda for next Tuesday's meeting potentially.
I would not put this issue on the consent agenda. Some of these things need to be.
I, I think he was talking about allowing someone to talk to outside council. Not that this is a big, big deal.
Specifically that specific issue.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I think Mark made the most salient point, right? Let's not, we're getting out of a mess, Mark, this Mark Thompson, let's, we're just, we're getting out of a mess. Let's not crawl back into one. Let's be a little more pragmatic, take our time, make sure we do everything right, cross all our teeth, dot our i's.
I guess, I would kind of leave it to Thompson, he knows what we want to do on this. And he, he knows who will need to, he'll, Mark Thompson will know who we should talk to, whether it's bond counsel, election law counsel, or some other kind of fire counsel. And, and he'll know who to bring in to, to, to help get it ready for the February agenda item.
Yeah. And just so we're clear, on the February agenda, we would expect to have two pieces, one related to the, to the ballot language.
Right.
And the second thing, dealing with the forgiveness of the loan and its implications as it relates to the five hundred thousand dollar negative.
And it'd be, and, and the ballot language would be proposing it and calling for the election.
Do we need to have the ballot language on February fourteenth or just that we're going to take?
Yes, ballot language.
I would suspect you're going to approve specific language.
Exactly.
Does it need a public point approving the idea of ballot language? We should have the ballot.
We should.
That you're going to need till February fourteenth, just to get that.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, so there's, there's another, there's another question here that I want us to consider before we step away from this. And it's relate, while it's related to the fire department and what we've been talking about tonight, it's a little bit aside. I know you guys dealt with this to some degree in your committee. And that is the other part of public safety. And that's our sheriff's contract. Now, I bring this up knowing that there, there's strong feeling about keeping these issues separate. But there is a connection because the, the fire, the cost of our contract with the fire or with the sheriff's department is about one point five million, right, per year roughly? And right now, that's being paid out of our general fund. And the pressure that that creates on our general fund, I think is something that we're, many of us are well aware of. And it has an impact in terms of our ability to bond. And so when we talk about issuing bonds for a, a second fire station, there is a relationship between that pressure on the general fund created by this large expenditure that we are not funding in any other way besides out of the general fund and our ability to bond. So I would hope that we can also think about possibly an Act thirty three millage to, or assessment to pay for that cost as well. Now, I understand that there's a desire to keep these issues separate. And one way to do that, I believe, and this is mentioned, I think, in the report, is to have a separate Act thirty three, you know, issue on the ballot. And, and my understanding is it would take about one mil to cover that cost. So I would like to propose that we also look into that and consider that as a board because that solves a larger problem that otherwise is going to be tripping up what we're talking about in terms of issuing bonds to pay for a second fire station.
Well, couple counterpoints. So the, the one point five that you continue to cite related to the sheriff's contract keeps being eerily close to this one point five million dollar loan that has been flipping back and forth between fire and general. Hold on, the S and P Global report and the information that the township provided was provided to the S and P Global prior to the one point eight revenue that came into fire. So all said, part of why I was objected so much to the unilateral provision of the financial reports is the financial report that were given to S and P made it seem like the general fund had a bigger problem than it really does. Happy to share any of that. Second, there is no debating. Our general fund is at nearly twice what any community might desire. Two years of operating, nearly two years. Any community would be jealous to have the fund balance policy that we have of one hundred percent of our operating funds, of our general funds. Third point, sheriff's conversation in the negotiation is that they made it ever so clear that the way that they plan to address the ever increasing costs of sheriff's patrol contracted out to Syo and other jurisdictions is to ask all of us to get behind, I think, a pretty significantly expanded public safety and mental health millage renewal in twenty twenty four. And they're going to reconvene the police services steering committee, and there's a whole strategy there. So I agree with you, Will, but I, I will just, you know, leave it there and let the committee members share all of the reasons why, from a policy perspective, administrative perspective, or even political perspective, why they opposed combining.
I wanted to make a comment here too.
Sort of, sort of, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't take, and I haven't talked to him about this, so I don't, don't know what he, I'm not speaking for Will, but I took his comment to be, hey, we also have to fund police. Should we look at a millage for police too? I don't think Will's trying to weasel anybody else in on this, whether it's a dispatch or fire, or I mean, you're a fire, or police, or here on Valley or anybody else like that. I think Will's point was a bigger question, what do we do about police, financing policing? And, and if, if, you know, if we need to have a special ballot for them, then that's something we can talk about at some later day. I, so I don't think of him trying to horn in on this one, and I know.
What was your proposal? Was it to think about changing this ballot proposal?
No, I was trying to be very clear that I was sort of grasping the suggestion that I thought I saw in the report of a separate millage, or not millage, a separate Act thirty three.
Funding mechanism.
Funding mechanism, S A, S A D or whatever it's, whatever the proper term is. It's not a millage, really, it's a, an assessment. And that it would be for the, the cost of the sheriff.
Yeah, I, I didn't think him trying to.
Okay.
Not, not, not pulled it into the.
Not pulled it into.
No, 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 separate, separate. But I think, I think the board should think about that because we do have this other issue that we have to address, and it's not going away. And, and there may be other things that in the future help us to deal with it. I mean, we are getting a subsidy from the Countywide Police and Mental Health Millage that helps to offset the cost, but the costs are still there. And it's a big part of why we have this structural issue with the, the general fund. And that was something that the S and P folks pointed at and said that can affect your bond rating. So it, it, there is a connection to the fire in that, in that sense. But I think that, I, I hear the committee's recommended, or I see the committee's recommendation in the report and I, I want to, you know, sort of, you know, honor that recommendation, I guess, to keep these things separate. But at the same time, you can't ignore the reality that there is an issue that we have to talk about. And I think it makes sense to talk about it together, even though the ballot questions, I think, probably really should be separate questions to the voters.
And Kathy had something to it.
Yeah, I had a few things to say. These are two completely different issues. And we've just had a committee spend months studying the data reports and give us their recommendations. We don't have anything comparable for the sheriff issue, the police issue. And I think it's odd to throw that comment into this discussion, which was supposed to be on fire services.
No, it didn't hurt anything though.
It probably didn't hurt anything, but.
It's come up several times, so that's why I was sensitive to it too, Will, is that even when we were talking about this meeting.
We would need a study, we would need more information.
There's been none of the analysis done.
Some townships are re-studying this issue and contemplating establishing their own police departments. I mean, God, no.
This is a.
Gypsy Township.
There's a model to live by, that I live by every day when I live, it's called last, last responsible moment. So we don't have to make that decision on, no, I'm agreeing with you. We don't have to make the decision on, on the sheriff today.
Right.
We make the decision on fire today. We can wait till the last responsible, responsible is a keyword, moment.
You guys, I just want to know, Kathy is still speaking.
Oh, well, sorry, didn't realize you were still.
That's okay, all of you.
I'm on your side.
That's okay.
Okay. I mean, I'm done, basically. I think that we have one issue before us tonight, and it relates to fire services. So let's deal with that.
Well, it's a working session, we're talking about putting an item on the ballot, or two items on the ballot, really, that address public safety. And Act thirty, excuse me, Act thirty three is a funding mechanism for public safety, and it can be used just for fire, it can be used just for police, or it can be used for both together. It can also include ambulance services. And I, and we have a, a situation with the township, with our budget, where we have major costs for both of those activities. And I think this is a moment that makes sense to think about. I'm, I'm sorry, it strikes you as being odd, but to me, it seems like it fits together naturally. And there is a connection in terms of that cost to our general fund and our ability to bond. So I, I think that, you know, we're, we're talking about a lot of different things, there are, there's overlap and it makes sense, especially if you're thinking about putting two things on the, or three things on the ballot, to think about them together.
Well, I, I guess I could make the argument that everything overlaps, it's so normal. Kathy's point today is about the fire department. I gotta, I gotta agree with her on that one.
I understand, I'm just.
Let's just revolve that, or we'll go till two o'clock in the morning.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying we should talk it through tonight, I'm just saying, as we go forward, I think we should also be considering that cost and how to do it, how to, how to take care of it.
Right, full stop.
Yep. And I would, I would just say, I think that, you know, I would, you know, I'm happy to, I'll, I'll draft a model motion kind of about what we said we'd proceed with today of, you know, looking at forgive, the proposal of forgiving the loan February fourteenth and February fourteenth to have the draft proposal language and call for an election for the fourteenth as well, fully prepared.
Could they be separate because they're.
The call for the election and the proposal are one, the loan forgiveness is a separate.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
All right, now, unless there's something further from the committee.
I was just going to say one thing regarding, you know, sort of a couple of things you'd said over the last twenty minutes. We did talk about, because it did come up during the discussion, the public safety village being used for things outside of the fire department. Really, our goal and our purview was how our charge and how we could execute that. I think the board overall as well, I think this is shared by everybody, is you do need to look at that at some point. There's a lot of things you guys need to look at, in reality. Ultimately, you should come up with a list and probably do rank choice order, you know, everybody makes their rank choice order and you guys come up with a mixed order and what's first is first and you work your way down the list. But ultimately, we really want this to stay within the fire department at this point. Obviously, that's an issue that needs to be addressed, the budget needs to be addressed, all sorts of things need to be addressed. But we really want this to stay within the fire department because the fire department is owned and staffed by Syo.
And that's a key factor.
And versus a contracted, contract where we even have a partner that can't perform to their contract right now, which is another interesting thing when they renew it and charge you more when they can't perform to their contract. But I'll get off my soapbox.
I'm sorry, I have one question for Lieutenant Baird because I promised him I would ask him this. So what is the union's position on the committee's recommendation?
Well, I was going to bring it up during public comment, but the, I'm, I'm probably finally back here. The union is one hundred percent supportive of the committee's recommendations.
Great. Which one? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if we want to ask for questions from anybody who's watching?
Well, I, I was going to turn to public comment, which we decided was we were going to have at the end.
And we have back and forth dialogue.
Well, I suppose if members of the public want to pose questions during their public comment, then we could allow time for either members of the committee or the board to respond. I would imagine most of the questions will be for the committee, but if, I don't think we have more than one member of the public, other than committee members here, or you, you're with a public?
We're just citizens.
Okay, so we have two members of the public who are here. So we'll start with people who are present, and then we'll turn to those who are participating remotely. Are you gonna handle that? Okay, great. All right, so, members of the public who are present, who would like to speak, please come forward, this is the time for public comment.
Well, I got questions and/or public comment. Is there a time limit?
Generally speaking, we. Excuse me, excuse me, there is a moderator, it is me. There is a three-minute time limit for a public comment, but I sense that there's a willingness to engage in more free-flowing dialogue this evening, so please proceed.
I'm Scott Cheekin, been in SIO for thirty-five years plus, and when I first came here, I helped Will Dane start the fire department here.
Thank you.
And I participated for two years. Came from the East Coast, where I was in the fire service on a call volunteer department. Had a ladder truck, had a heavy rescue truck, and we ran our town angles. I also taught at the Mass Fire Academy, L and G L and G firefighting skills and incident command. That's how I knew Will Dane, it's a small community, when you get down with it. Over the years, I volunteered to help with past board leadership, and it never took me up on these kinds of discussions. I support a lot of what I see in Phase Four. Ladder, I've always questioned why and how we exist without a ladder truck, it's mind mine. I got a lot of questions, but I'll go zero in on your dollar a day kind of idea. In the Northeast, we achieved great ISO ratings, because we could demonstrate not just response time, but the delivery of a certain amount of water.
And people.
And people. I've heard a lot of people and response time, but I haven't heard about the water. Water's been a big concern of mine. The way we did that was with four-inch hose, five-inch hose programs, dry hydrant in ponds, things like that, where we could demonstrate we could move water. We achieved great ISO ratings. So I'll get to the point, maybe it's not a dollar a day, maybe it's fifty cents a day. How much savings could I make if I go from an ISO seven to where we are now?
Six.
Six, down to four. What is that on my hazard insurance?
The committee did try to address this question. We, we as well, multiple members of the committee reached out to different insurance agencies and different insurance agents to try to get specific numbers. It was very difficult to get them to respond with specifics.
So you want to market this? That's how we did it, that's how we got major hose programs?
The market was it.
You know? And I'm not talking about nine hundred feet, I'm talking about two thousand, three thousand feet of hose. You know, we're talking about major, Northeast was known for this back in the seventies. We did this in the seventies. They still do it.
I love it, it's awesome.
All right. I'm not hearing too much about HVA. I've had to use HVA services, and I'm a big fan. Why are we talking about, I was also an EMT.
I'm a pre-EMT.
So I'm lapsed, right? But I can still, I, you know, I know, I think it too, I'm working at St. Joe's at the moment. So my question is, why, what's wrong with HVA? Why are we talking about advanced life support capability, building that and owning that, and not building on HVA relationship? What, is there something wrong? So we don't have, I don't want to burden this discussion at this point. Maybe there's a hybrid in the model. You know, we go to a three or four, but, but one of the, is we got a good handle on what the cost benefit is for our hazard insurance by improving our ISO rating, and how do we get there? You know, and it has, it can't be squishy, it's got to be a good number. You know, we put the, what we used to call in the Northeast, you know, the taxpayer, the big store, the big commercial store, I don't, how we, what kind, what are you paying for hazard insurance?
It's a lot.
We cannot be highly rated, it just, it just won't work there. I don't know what the, you know, I know what it was thirty-five years ago, but how, what it took to get to a good ISO rating, I don't know what it does now. And I guess I, in closing, I'd like to volunteer my services.
All right.
Awesome.
Go for it.
A couple of questions, relationship with HVA is great. They're stretched thin with paramedics right now, and their, their, their response times are getting longer. Our, our goal, I think initially, is to get a BLS transport ambulance available, so that we respond right along with them, and they evaluate the patients, say, ah, yeah, BLS call, go ahead and take it, and they're back in service for the chest bag.
Yeah, I just remember what it took, you know, to own, run and own our own ambulance, you know, and it was quite a bit thirty-five years ago. You know, I think we, it also didn't cost eight thousand dollars for an individual to become paramedic, or whatever it takes this day. I, if we could maybe even think about funding, you know, that, that education, that certification, you know, I think, so I guess, you know, I, I think there's some fine tuning in the plan, and, you know, I appreciate all the funding issues, you know, and being here for thirty-five years, I know how we've gotten into those issues, you know, and they're coming home to roost, okay? So, yeah, we got to take care of those, but it does not, we spent most of our time talking about that, and not the merits of, how do I achieve an ISO three or four rating for the town and really save some money? And then maybe it's only fifty cents a day.
And, and I just want to say, Chief, you know, something you said made me realize, too, a big question for the public will be, how do we integrate with HVA? Because I do think HVA's, you know, shortages are very much in the news, and we don't want to be caught in that unnecessary debate about fire v. HVA, because it's not about that at all.
Or simply, we simply want to work with them to improve the service to everyone.
Exactly.
If we can take, you know, a couple minor calls to free their paramedic unit backup, and improves the system, overall, that's our goal.
Yeah. I, I think it was just, I mean, I got lots of notes, I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk, but Engine One, I call him Engine One, but old Engine One, I wrote that. And with one out to two thousand and thirty-five, we're calling it subservice right now, what are we doing? I mean, what, what, what does that even mean? I don't even, you're calling it a backup engine. Sell it, get rid of it, let's get a ladder truck, you know, let's, you know, somehow there's a. There's a. It's got to be a domation.
You gotta have a garage door to get it in, though.
You know? You know, when I saw the house being refurbished, I said, where's the ladder? You know, that's my wife, I've just been complaining about it for twenty years. Where's the ladder?
I would love to have you stop by. Shall we invite Kathleen, come on up?
Wow, that was a revelation to find an expert in our community, thank you so much.
Well, dated, had expertise.
Still expertise.
Yes.
And you bring a perspective that we need, that this committee talked about, which was how much our homeowners are going to save. They definitely talked about it. I was at all their meetings, if I missed one, I think I watched one. These guys did a fabulous job. The, the expertise, the probing, the knowledge of their committee was phenomenal, especially Mark Perry. So if they recommend it, they've thought through all of it. I think there's one, one item that I do have a question on, and I think it's being possibly overlooked. And this is the standard that you want, Chief Hood, about two in, two out. So could you just explain that very simply for everybody? What does it mean, two in, two out? I think I understand it, but.
So if this is a door to a house, and there's a fire on the other side, if I'm going to send two people through that door, there are going to be two people standing on the outside waiting.
And what if you don't have two in, two out?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, guys are gonna do whatever they can, but they can't enter that door.
But they can't enter that door. So how many do you have, how many firefighters do you have on shift right now?
Today, four.
Not today, in general?
Uh, so we're averaging four about a third of the time.
So most of the time, they have three.
We actually just lost one of our paid-on call folks to.
So they can never get to two in, two out. So technically, any fire they go to, they can't enter, because they only have three firefighters. They are reliant on the other municipalities. And the other municipalities are reliant on SIO, I learned this from their sessions, and what the other municipalities get is not enough that they even help them, because they just don't have enough to give. So what the chief proposed in last year's budget was, he wanted to hire additional staff, right? This one point five forced him into a negative position. So he had a need to hire, he could not hire. So there is an immediate need for this, because these guys are risking their lives with two in, two out. They go to a fire, somebody is desperate, in the homeowner, they plead with them to go in, technically, they can't go in. They do go in, and that's because he hasn't been able to hire how many, two or three? Three staff members. So this negative five hundred thousand completely impacts that. And it's also, it should have been an audit finding, because the township cannot have a negative fund balance, it's against the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act. And I went through the whole audit, and I go, why is this not in here? This is a statute, this is breaking a statute. You can't have a negative balance. And I went through that whole report, and there's a section on the F sixty-five that says, have any of these been reported the prior year? And it puts a no in there.
The audit procedures report for the F sixty-five.
That says, have you, any of these findings been in prior years? And they put a no in there, and that's absolutely not correct. So how can Plant Moran put a no in there when we have prior findings from prior years? I'm sorry I won't be able to be at the next board meeting, but these are the kinds of things I'm gonna, I was gonna hammer to say, Plant Moran, how did, how did you legitimately put it in in there? There are, the state publishes audit procedure standards, and if we had prior findings that we should have again, there's no way they could put a no in there. That's a huge mistake. Those are the kind of flags that state treasury should be looking for, so if we misrepresented that, state treasury goes, oh, nothing to see here. Well, my group thinks there's a lot to see here, you had it the year before, you had it the year before that, and so that simple thing is a problem. Okay, back to what I really wanted to talk about is that you need to fix this five hundred thousand dollar deficit, because they don't have a safe situation. They do, they are not at two in, two out. So I support what these guys do, I spent a lot of time over there, I talked to them, I heard the stories. It's not fair, the position that we put them in, it's an unsafe position, so please think about that, I appreciate it.
I feel like there's a little bit more explanation about the two in, two out. It's a safety issue, really, I mean, it's sort of implicit in everything that we've been saying, but why is it so important to have the two out for the two in?
So, so those are our initial rescue team. If those two guys going into the house encounter something, something falls down on them, they're now trapped. If there, there's an issue with the floor, and the floor starts caving in, they're trapped. That, that two out is the rescue team for the two firefighters who are in. And they'll go in there, and the two people get in trouble inside the home, are gonna say, hey, we need help, we just had this fall on us, or we, we're here and we can't get out, or whatever the situation may be, and then those guys are now tasked with resolving that.
Okay.
And they're pulling, pulling that cabinetry that, off of them, and getting them back out, or extending a ladder down, or whatever the situation.
It was, it's sort of what I thought, but I, I just wanted to make sure it was clear. I, we are in public comment, and I think we've had all of people who are present from the public who would like to comment, have commented, and are there people participating remotely who would like to make a public comment?
Yes, we have Rob, Pat, and Rob, you can go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up, Chief, because I think it's important for the board to understand how this fund balance issue is related to budgeting. Last budget year, you came to the board, you had a positive fund balance of, I'm not sure, seven hundred, you raised it to nine hundred, something like that, let's say seven hundred. Did, did you request all or part of those three firefighters?
My initial, my initial draft, yes, I requested.
Okay, and then what was in the request that was brought to the board?
Status quo.
Status quo. And also in that request to the board, did it also suggest changing that fund balance to the negative five hundred?
Don't remember, I don't have a.
Okay. So my, what I want. Okay, so my, what I want this board to say, my hope and expectation for this year's budgeting process, and I know that's now with Mark, is that I would want to make sure that we're getting as true of the requests as possible from the people responsible for their departments. Understanding that it's going to be informed by, you know, fiscal constraints and things like that. But I want to make sure that the chief, right now, if we leave him with negative five hundred thousand fund balance, we should be expecting no change. Or, you know, so, so.
Not, not positive change.
Yeah, no positive change until we resolve that, because there's nothing to work with.
Are there more public comments?
Oh, Gillian is on, Gillian, you can go ahead.
Oh, so finish up, Rob. Rob, um, oh, Gillian was next.
Gillian, you can go ahead.
Good evening.
Hi, Gillian.
Yeah, good to hear from you.
Yeah, yeah, I watched the whole Zoom meeting and I read through the reports. I want to thank the committee and Chief Hood for everything they've done. It's, um, I've sat in a lot of, in the, a lot of their meetings are through Zoom. And they put a lot of work into this, thank you so much. Um, I have a couple of notes here regarding the, the one point five million. Back in the day, you know, we're beating this thing to death here, but, um, so in two thousand and eight, under the resolution, and that was the, the point, um, the resolution for the ballot language for the point nine, um, uh, millage. Uh, in, in the resolution, it says that this was to provide partial funding for the fire protection and for the township's cost to create and administer, administer a fire protection special assessment district. So that, that original millage was never to fully fund the fire department. So in two thousand and nineteen, that language was not changed, there were some things that were added. Um, I think building and there was something else. So before, and then, then we came to the, you know, we had to, because the, frankly, the township did not take care of the fire department and the building was disintegrating. So we had to do some mod, um, remodeling, because it was full of mold and rats and the doors were falling apart, literally, the big doors and whatnot. Nineteen seventies avocado green kitchen that only one person can go into. Okay, well, anyway, so we had to do the remodel. The remodel went over as much as, um, well, I think the one point five million that, and then the board approved it. Well, then there was this agreement about a loan, well, it never should have been a loan in the first place. The township owns that building, if we were to sell that building, would we give that money back from the sales of the building into the fire fund? No, it would go into the general fund. So with that said, I'm in full support of the full one point five million being returned. And that's including the three payments or two or three payments that have been made already. Okay, that's one thing. Um, the other, I have a question, so I, regarding this, um, there's the operating millet, millage and the capital, um, fund millage. From my understanding, those are going to be two separate ballot questions? Or are they going to be two questions under one ballot? Because I don't understand, if one is not approved and then the other one is, then the township goes ahead and levies for that money? I, um, am I misunderstanding?
You're, you're correct, they would be two related proposals. And if the operating millage passed, it would go forward up to a limit. If they both passed, both the operating and capital would go forward.
Okay, and why can't they be on one ballot?
So it would be on one ballot and they would be two questions right next to each other and they would be related. So it would be basically two questions under, uh, and I, I, I don't know this and we'll, we'll learn this. One, it's kind of like one proposal, but it would be, it, it would be two proposals that would be interrelated. So I've seen this before, I've never written one of these, but we'll figure it out.
Okay, and I don't understand why they need to be separate, um, it.
Mark, do you want to speak to why we separated?
The, the capital question, valid question, would be a fixed millage amount. Fifty cents, sixty cents, whatever the millage rate would be. Based on a, on just a straight line amortization, it's, because you're just, all you're doing is servicing principal and interest, that's all you're doing. But on the separate question of operating, operating under Act thirty-three, it's a variable expense, it can go up and down. But if we're going to do three, step three, option three, we need to ask for the maximum amount of millage. I mean, we may not levy it all, but we need to state the maximum amount. You can grow up to it, you can go down to it, year in and year out. So we just, all we're doing is just isolating capital from operating. The operating is just going to be a straight line and it's that simple. And then if, if the, the capital doesn't pass, what you still have built into that ceiling, the maximum amount of operating expense, assuming you were going to get that fire station that you turned down. Then the governor then pushes the, uh, the maximum year in and year out, um, levy based on the nine months of accrued reserve.
Okay, but I still don't understand why it has to be two separate instead of just in one ballot.
So, so Gillian.
Simplicity.
Yes, simplicity.
Yeah.
So, so for the voters, I mean, I know we're doing, we're thinking through all of this on the front end. So, so Gillian, when a voter shows up, you don't want to have two questions packed into one proposal, okay? Where it's too much, where say somebody, you know, wants to fund the operating, but doesn't think we need the, the second station. And also, we've got different terms for each of these. So it's just, it's actually, believe it or not, for the voter at the end of the day, it's going to be more plain language and more accessible to voters by splitting them.
In, in terms of transparency, you're asking two questions, as Dave just said, simplicity. Is, is that with the capital millage, the way the ballot language is going to be written, you can only use it to pay debt. And you may levy it for fifteen years so that you can have the lowest possible bond, uh, millage rate. But on the operating side, again, there is the highest amount, maximum amount you can levy, but it can be, it can go up and down and keep it as low as possible. And the voters know how much they're paying for debt and how much they're paying for operating.
So they could vote down one or the other or both, or vote both for both.
If they track, if, if they vote down the capital, there's no firehouse, there's no apparatus, you, you just have step one. That's all you get. And you continue on with your existing one point three five.
Yeah.
But I will caution this, you will not have corrected the structural deficiency in the financing of the fire department. If you just continue on with the one point three five.
Bob, I, I saw your hand raised, did you want to respond?
Gillian, when Gillian's done.
Well, I thought you were responding to Gillian's question.
So there's, I have one other, um, comment, um, so there's, uh, let's see, this was on page four. And a cost recovery model for excessive medical calls to commercial establishments. And, which I agree definitely, but I want to take it a little bit further, because, um, of course, we, we have, um, well, definitely Heritage Woods, and we're going to have some assisted living, um, facility in there and calls. And I believe Parkland Plaza, well, there was a senior home there that, I don't know what's going on with that. But I'm going to assume that we're eventually have another one. So we do need to, um, capture costs from that. But also, you know, and here on River, there, there's, um, people do stupid stuff like, um, get drunk and lost in the middle of the night and our fire department has to go out and save them. Or, you know, there's other things that have happened. But, you know, things like that, they should be charged, because it's taking away from people that have true emergencies. And also on I ninety-four, you know, it goes through our township. Um, and there's, I know we get a lot of calls for I ninety-four and we should be charging those, um, insurance companies. You know, every, any place that we can get money to come back to the fire department or, you know, our services, I fully support that. One other thing is, you know, um, I went out with a, um, with our fire investigator to Scioparms, there was a, of, um, a fire in a modular home just recently. So just to, you know, I'm always looking to educate myself. And I was thinking about it that, you know, they did not have insurance, by the way, and that's a real problem in, um, in Scioparms. However, there are other, you know, most, most facilities or most ho- homes do have, um, insurance. And for us to send a fire investigator out, I hope we're char, um, charging them for our time for that as well. There's just these little things that we could be, um, charging for. And I think that, um, may be it, and hopefully I will see you next Tuesday, thank you.
Feel better. I, I just want to correct one thing, Gillian and a couple of people have said this, the fire station renovation was never over budget. It was always planned to be about three point three million dollars. It was broken into phases, a phase one of one point eight and a phase two of one point five based on availability of identified financing. It was an artificial phase.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean over budget, I meant that.
That's okay, I just want people.
Yeah, the renovations came back higher than what was expected at one point.
So, so Bob, I wanted to call on you and then turn to our next public commenter, just to keep this moving along.
I'll be quick, it was, yeah, the realization that, you all know that all of our discussions couldn't possibly be packed into tonight. So, um, you haven't heard everything that we've talked about. One of the main things I wanted to bring up was the ballot proposal could be accompanied by an ordinance that would stipulate all the conditions under which it would be, the proposal would be implemented. So we don't want to forget about, I mean, you should know that that's been proposed. And you could put a lot of the complicated language in there and simplify the ballot language based on it. So keep that in mind in the next couple of weeks when you're putting it, putting it together.
And, and I just want to, as, as people are feeling antsy, and I know we're almost done, I want to just, um, say that the committee asked for this meeting back in November as, as kind of a, a work session, thinking it might take more than this amount of time, so I just want to acknowledge that.
During the day too, so people are fresh.
And I, I do want to just, um, say Chair David Reed, Vice Chair Bob Groden, all the members, Teri Suave and the chief. I have to say, this is the best committee I've ever been on in Sciop Township, best analysis, best deliberation. Um, so thank you, everybody, for your great work.
Does anyone else from the public who would like to comment?
Uh, David, how's his hand up, David?
Real quickly, in deference to the lateness of the hour, um, this one, repeat, we have two hundred and ninety-three days until the, the election from tonight, so the clock is ticking, time is of the essence, thank you.
That's it.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Brazil, support by, no? All figures say aye. We are adjourned at ten, well.